Welcome. Welcome, everyone, to this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. On the, yeah, a little bit of an echo, but we'll, we'll get used to it and hopefully the audio is better for everyone who's tuning in online. So again, I just want to start out this meeting. We have a Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going. I think online can hear and in the room can hear. We're gonna keep going. So this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for North Idaho College is called Order on Wednesday. It's April 26th at 6:01 PM and a quorum is present. Thank you, trustees. Welcome, everyone in the audience. Welcome into the overflow room and thank you for those who've signed up for public comment. So we have a quorum. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This, at the beginning, we have something special and unique today. It's gonna be very exciting. Welcome to the front row, participants, and I'm gonna hand it over to President Swain.
Yeah, so this, at this time every year, we recognize those faculty that have made the extra effort and gone through the whole three-year process to achieve tenure status. And so this year, we have, last year, there were very few. This year, we have a larger number, 13 faculty that will receive tenure. So we're gonna call those up starting, and the introductions will be led by Sherri Simkins, who's somewhere here. There, okay. So Sherri will kick this off and we'll identify all of them. They'll come up, get their picture taken, and then we'll let them leave and bring in more folks that can take their families home. So it'll be a short ceremony, but it's very important for them and their families.
On the side. Side microphone, please.
Is that working?
Yep, we hear you.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair McKenzie, trustees, President Swain. First off, thank you for moving tenure conferrals to the top of the agenda. Our candidates and their guests appreciate that. We have 13 tenure candidates tonight, and it's my privilege as Dean of Instruction to present seven of the general studies candidates. And my colleague Doug Anderson wasn't able to join us tonight, and so I'll present two of the CTE faculty. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Associate Dean of Instruction for Nursing and Health Professions, Earlene Pickett, and she'll be presenting four faculty from the nursing and health professions area. Before we dive into presenting the candidates, I want to talk a little bit about the process that they went through. Tenure is a rigorous process that ensures teaching excellence. These faculty were required to have student evaluations for all students in all courses for all of the probationary years of their tenure. They develop a faculty evaluation team, which consists of one member from inside of their division and one member from outside of the division. This team observes them every semester, along with their division chair. The faculty evaluation team and chair review all of the evidence, the observations, the student evaluations, and they provide recommendations to the candidates each year for improvement. Each year, the candidates write a self-evaluation. This includes experience, education, teaching effectiveness, professional growth, meeting contractual responsibilities, and professional ethics. This process continues for each of the three probationary years. In the fall of the fourth year, the faculty compile a tenure portfolio. The evaluation team and division chair provide letters for or against tenure. The tenure committee, which consists of a number of faculty on campus, review each of the portfolios and solicit comments from the campus community. The provost and president each review the tenure portfolios and provide their endorsements. It's important to note that tenure is not guaranteed for life. These candidates will be formally evaluated every three years and will continue to have student evaluations each year. Let me go ahead and introduce you to each of the candidates and their impressive backgrounds. As I introduce you, if you'll come up to the front. First candidate here is Dr. Nicole Wilmes. She has a PhD from the University of Southern California in sociology and is an associate professor of sociology. One of her co-division chairs said she exceeds service expectations and continually seeks out opportunities for professional growth and maintains high ethical standards in her interactions with students and colleagues. Our next candidate is Dr. John Rees. John has a Juris Doctorate from the University of Idaho College of Law, and he is an associate professor, an assistant professor for criminal justice. The division chair said Professor Rees has done an admirable job growing the criminal justice program. His faculty evaluation team members stated his commitment to student success and teaching are remarkable. E. Katerina Miller. E. Katerina holds a Masters of Science in Mathematics and a Masters of Science in Computer Science, and throughout her tenure process, she has transitioned from mathematics over to computer science. E. Katerina, her division chair said, "In my experience observing E. Katerina's teaching, I've seen a style of teaching that is patient, engaging, and respectful. She encourages student questions and develops a cooperative learning environment that makes students feel safe in asking questions when confused." Kathleen Miller-Green. Kathleen holds a Masters of Arts from the University of Montana in Interpersonal Communication. Kathleen is our Child Development Associate Professor. She has taught at North Idaho College for the past 16 years. One of her students stated, "Hands down, the best class I have taken at NIC so far. Kathleen is so knowledgeable and kind. Her lectures and tests mean business, but I've learned and retained so much from this class than most of my other courses. I'm literally keeping my entire notebook for this class for when I become a parent one day." Dr. Dwayne Huff. Dwayne holds a Doctorate of Arts from the University of Mississippi in Music. One of his faculty evaluation team members said, "His curriculum is rigorous and demanding, and yet students in all of his classes seem excited to be there and tackle the work with relish." Dr. Travis Tagner. Travis holds a Doctorate Degree from the University of Nevada Reno in Political Science. One student remarked, "The lectures were funny and engaging. One of my favorite classes I've ever taken. He was realistic and talked to us instead of just acting like we were mindless students there to listen." Brandy Fries. Brandy holds a Masters of Science from the University of Idaho in Chemistry. She's an assistant professor in chemistry. Her student commented, "Brandy is a very patient and understanding instructor who really genuinely cares about how her students are doing. She wants them all to excel, and this honest care in a person really adds credit to her credibility as an instructor." Sean Seder. It doesn't look like Sean is with us tonight, but Sean holds a Limited Occupational Certificate in HVAC, and he's an assistant professor of HVAC. His division chair stated, "Sean has an incredible enthusiasm for what he teaches, which translates to the students being extremely excited to learn the material presented and excel on the lab assignments. Sean has a true magic touch in encouraging students to do their best, which I attribute partially to his coaching background. Sean is very patient in explaining procedures and imparting information on each student." And last but not least, for my portion, Chef Hillary Jennifer Parrot. One of her FET members said, "In the classroom, she prevents, she presents great leadership." Her student commented, "Chef Jennifer Parrot is of the best human beings on the face of this planet, and make sure you learn to the best of her ability. The hands-on approach that is required with the culinary arts is where she and I shine, and I learned a lot from this amazing lady." And I'll pass it over to my colleague, Earlene Pickett, to introduce our remaining four candidates.
So the first What did I do? Oh, there we go. The first person that I'd like to call up is Matthew Nolan. He has a Master's Degree in Education, and he, you heard from him last board meeting as he reviewed the radiology program. Matthew displays subject expertise. His students recognize that and appreciate it. He exemplifies effectiveness in both classroom and administrative aspects of his department. He's available and dedication and dedicated to supporting his students. It's not unusual for me to see a line of students outside of his office. He proves adept at adjusting class to student feedback, so if they look confused, he certainly clarifies with them. And we appreciate Matthew for saving the radiology program and elevating it to one of the best in the region and actually one in the best of the country. The remaining three are nursing faculty. The first is Sharon Funkhauser. Sharon received her Master's Degree from Grand Canyon University. She is dedicated to the nursing department and has proven an asset to the department and the college. She was instrumental in helping us write our AICN accreditation report. She displays diligence in paperwork and initiative in organizing large projects. So over the course of COVID, we threw lots of curveballs at Sharon. They needed help in the community, and so we provided staff or students to the COVID vaccination clinics, and every year, we help with flu vaccination clinics across the community. That's Sharon that organizes all that. She exhibits expertise in her field, efficiently bringing that knowledge into the classroom, and she is enthusiastic and personable in her lecture style. Next is Connie Clum. Connie responds whenever we need her. If we've got a shortage somewhere in the program, Connie is the first one to step up and say, "How can I help?" She has a strong commitment to student success. She is in charge of our mentor program, where we pair students together to help each other through the program. Her expertise in her field and using innovative teaching methods to make classes highly engaging was recognized by the AICN site visitors. They wanted to all be part of her class. She demonstrates consistency in eliciting critical thinking in the students, which is very important, and she is the master of create, of using pedagogy and learning styles and adopting them so that the students are engaged in class. And Stephen Smith. Stephen received his Master's Degree from Washington Governors University. Stephen is our go-to person for technology. He is, he's the one who teaches faculty to use the smart board and do all those fun things. It's not unusual for me to walk by his classroom when he's teaching, and he has music playing. Somehow, he has a playlist that fits whatever topic it is that he's teaching to get the students engaged for the day. He offers humorous anecdotes and achieves great rapport with students. And he displays commitment and involvement in the NIC campus. One of the students said, "Get a clone. We need more Steve, we need more Stephens."
Trustees, we are confident that the candidates we are presenting tonight have met the qualifications for earning tenure and are committed to teaching excellence. We ask for your vote for the conferral of tenure.
Thank you.
We just need a motion and if somebody make the motion to approve them for tenure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve tenure for these candidates.
Trustee Corkle, thank you very much. May I have a second? Trustee Banducci.
Second that motion.
Trustee Banducci, seconded that motion. I think there was plenty of discussion right here already. Let's call for the vote. So all those in favor of approving tenure for these candidates that we've heard of, say aye.
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 I hear four ayes. I'm gonna call that a un-
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you. Unanimous vote in support of our faculty and teachers. Thank you very much.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a, just give us a few minutes to get organized and take a picture. This is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these folks, so the trustees are all gonna go up there with the, with the candidates and get a picture. So Ellie's gonna organize us, so give us just a second. Thank you all for your indulgence. This is really important to the faculty and their families, and I'd say to the students and the future of NIC. And with that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
I think we're headed back to you, though. For the celebrating success, President Swain.
Right, and so, so celebrating success, we have some graduates that are going to come up and say a few words about their experience at NIC. These guys are gonna leave, and they're, let's give a couple of seconds for folks to come in, but our trio folks are gonna speak, so. Come on up, come on up, get, get to the mic and we'll there'll be some more, let's let the other folks come in and get settled before you all start sharing your stories, but we'll just wait a couple of seconds here. Stuart, are you ready? Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait on him.
You're doing it. We're doing it.
Yeah. I know. Yeah.
I'm gonna, looks like we're good, ask the question. Is there anyone who wanted to sign up for public comment but missed the sign-in? In the outflow room? Is there anyone? Just please stand up maybe, or come knock in, or did I miss somebody? I'm not seeing anyone, so I think-
You got one more, Stuart. There's one more spot up there.
There's an open seat in the front row unless that, nope, I think that's being reserved.
Yep, okay, okay.
Is that, you want, he wants to do public comment? Okay. Okay, will you, I need a volunteer to go solicit some more public comments, so. So if well, when it's time, I recognize you. Okay, uh, board, okay. He's, he's heard this before. He's a professional. We're gonna move forward with our ACCT consultants. I'm gonna introduce them. We have Debbie D. Thomas. I think that's a Dr. Debbie D. Thomas, and a Ken Burke. So Dr. Debbie D. Thomas is a former president. I'll let her introduce her, her credentials, but what I've-
We're gonna do the success stories for-
Oh. Hello. Thank you. Yes, welcome, celebrating success. Here we go. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Swain. Well, good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees, Dr. Swain, students, colleagues, community members, and guests. My name is Becky. I'm the Director of Academic Support Program at NIC, and I'm honored to address everyone in attendance today. As you know, graduation is in a few short weeks, and we have many NIC students who've worked hard to complete their educational goals and will receive certificates and diplomas. The Registrar's Office today reported that in this past fall, we had 258 graduates. This spring, we have 591 students who've applied for graduation, and this summer, 76 students have applied for graduation so far. I have the privilege of introducing three students who will complete their associate's degrees next month. Terry, Nick, and Paul have all overcome challenges in their lives, and each has succeeded in the first step of their educational goal. They all plan to transfer this fall to pursue a bachelor's degree, and tonight, each gets to share just a bit about their journey at NIC. I'll leave you with this. Nobel Peace Prize winner Nelson Mandela stated, "The education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world." Tonight, we get the privilege of hearing just a few of the amazing stories of NIC grads who will do just that, change the world. Terry.
Thank you, Becky. Sorry. My name is Terry Simmons, and I'm a full-time Trio student here at NIC, and I will be graduating with my AA degree in social work next month. Thank you. I'm also a Trio mentor and a cardinal peer advocate, which is really hard to say really fast. And I'll be transferring to LCSC this fall. I'm already registered for the Bachelors of Social Work program. And thank you to all the advisors that helped with that. And I'm the first person in my family who will get a bachelor's degree. Yeah. And my father was on his way to getting a bachelor's degree in 1966 when he chose to drop out of college and go with his younger brother to Vietnam. And when he came back, he never finished, but he always wanted one of his kids to get their bachelor's degree, and you know, better late than never. And one of the things that I watched with my father when he came back as I was growing up was that he really struggled with PTSD and with Agent Orange, and struggled over the years with that because there was so much stigma around trying to get help for some of that. And he struggled with that, and he also passed away at the age of 54 from a, from an unexpected heart attack. And I watched that happen with my family, this passing on from generation to generation. Both my grandparents were World War II veterans, and so I have a lot of veterans in my family that have struggled, and it's, a family struggles with that as well. And I've watched the effects of this through my family and how this stigma robs the entire family of this kind of healing. So when he passed away, I started getting counseling and started doing yoga. And, and then a few years later, I started teaching yoga here at the college in fall of 2007 as a part-time adjunct teacher. And over the years of the great privilege of being here, I've been able to work with a lot of students, and the ones that always impressed me the most were the veterans that took my class and would tell me how it was helping them, and it's, it inspired me, and I recognized that I wanted to go back to school and get a bachelor's degree and be more effective in my community and helping with veterans and their families and anyone with PTSD. And I feel like I do this in honor of their memory, my, my father and my grandparents, and, and showing that it's never too late, by the way. And I'm just so grateful for Trio, the amazing Trio advisors that have sat with me for hours, showed me how to succeed after many, many years of not being in school as a student, and all the students that have been so inspiring. And I also want to shout out to Paul Manzaro, my division chair, and Colleen Ward, the Administrative Assistant, who has just been so supportive of me going back to school as well as leading our division. And, and I just love being a cardinal. Thank you to the math lab. So much anxiety about math. So, and all the other tutors and all the teachers, all of my teachers. This is such a great program, and all of this we get to do from here. So thank you so much, and thank you to all the veterans that have served here in this room. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Nick Maniscalco. I graduated high school in 2007. I came here the fall of 2008, or sorry, 2007. And then I like, cause I knew you have to have an education to get anywhere in life. So I I attended here. January 27, 2008, I was driving and I hit, I slid off the road and I crashed my car. I have received a traumatic brain injury. I was whipped across the car. My head hit the trailer that I hit. I crushed my skull in about four inches in my brain. I was in the hospital for eight months, in a coma for four of those months. So I got out of the hospital, and I was like, I still have to do things, like I'm still alive. I praise God. And so, oh, that's another thing. While I was in the hospital in a coma, the doctors told my parents, "He might not ever walk again." While I was in the hospital in a coma, the doctors told my parents, he might not ever walk again. He might not ever talk again. You'll be lucky if he functions as a human. We suggest you pull his life support blood. So, thank you, thanks be to God. My parents didn't do that, obviously. And so I have decided, like, they saw very, very little hope in me. And I take that, and I take that as a challenge in a sense. They said I would never walk again. September 5, 2011, to September 4, 2012, I walked 365 miles within 365 days. So I'm not, like, obviously I'm talking. I've talked to tens of thousands of people. I've talked at different churches, 50 different congregations, stuff like that. So that was the then school. I knew I needed an education to get anywhere in life. So I started coming here. And as of two weeks or so, a week and a half, I will have received an AA and an AS. So I have a traumatic brain injury. As many of you can see, I can't function really, like, my mobility is diminished. But just because I have this doesn't mean I can't achieve anything, I can't succeed in life. So, yeah. NIC has definitely been a huge blessing for me.
Excuse me, sir. One trustee at a.
Hey, what are the names of your parents that have walked through this journey with you? Can you share their names with us?
Guy Maniscalco and Debbie Maniscalco.
Okay, well cheers to them too.
Yeah. They're amazing.
So my name is Paul, 39 years old. I've got two kids who changed my life. I grew up in foster care and moving back and forth between Las Vegas and Idaho Falls. My education was very little. I made it all the way up to high school and never finished. Ended up going to prison, being involved in gangs, and being addicted to drugs. My goals then were to get a gold seal. That was, that was my life goal, to get a gold seal, get off probation. Then I had my kids, and my life turned upside down, or right side up, actually. I started school at CEI in southeast Idaho and didn't have any kind of path. I had no clue what I was gonna do. I thought I was gonna do public speaking, but I'm pretty nervous right now, so I don't know if I would have done very well. So some of the barriers that I faced going to school was not knowing what to do next, how to apply for grants or scholarships, or even if I was deserving of them. Knowing resources, if you would have asked me three years ago what resources were, I probably would have said resource officer, you know? I was clueless about life. And I made it through the first semester at CEI with Cs and transferred up here where I found out about Trio. And I met Becky and the Trio advisors, and wow, they steered me in the right direction. They gave me confidence. They helped me build my confidence with, you know, giving me options, letting me choose what it was that I wanted to do. And I knew that, you know, being in the elementary school kid that was held back in second grade that never really was able to go to school and learn and get that education that I did want. The, just being so far behind in school, all the way up to my senior year, and I didn't graduate because I just couldn't apply myself. I just didn't really want to because I didn't feel like I could. So my goal is, is to help those kids. I want to help those kids not feel that way. And you know, the kids that are neglected by their parents or being raised in foster care, I want to change that in any way I can. So my goal is to be an elementary education teacher. I'm concurrently enrolled at U of I. My lowest score there so far in the last two semesters is a 99.2. But I can honestly say that I wouldn't have been able to do it without the faculty and staff here at NIC and the students as well. I've been able to take a position of the Trio president and turn things around for the Trio club and get that going again. And my goals are just to continue on. I don't want to stop at a bachelor's, I want to continue on. So my goal is to one day be Dr. Myers. But I honestly, I can say now that my goal is, is to be a part of something forever, and that's to be alumni of the North Idaho College.
Thank you, thank you all very much for sharing your stories. I know that some of those are not easy to share, so I really appreciate it, and I think the audience does as well. And it shows what NIC means to all of you, and I think that is very much appreciated by everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what's next?
Now ACC.
ACC. All right, I'm gonna leave this to you and introduce them if you don't mind. Actually, I like, I'm gonna introduce this word. These are our ACC consultants. If you'd please come forward, or they're already on the screen, looks like. On the screen, who you have, that is Ken Burke. He's a trustee at, which college?
Petersburg College in Florida.
And how long have you been a trustee for?
I was a trustee for 13 years.
For 13 years. And Ken, this is your second time visiting with us. You were here the last ACCT training a year or two ago, and thank you for coming back. And certainly, at the microphone, we have Dr. Debbie D. Thomas, who it's her first foray with NIC this year, starting in January, and officially on contract with ACCT now. And welcome, thank you. Maybe Dr. D. Thomas, if you could just give us a little intro to each of yours as much as you need, and then the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Chair McKenzie, members of the board, President Swain, college students, staff, faculty, administrators, and community supporters of NIC, both in person and online. First, I want to commend the faculty who have achieved their tenure status. It's, I remember that, and it's one of the best days of my life, and I hope they all take time to celebrate. And secondly, say thank you and congratulations to the three students who spoke tonight. That's a phenomenal accomplishment, and the stories that they told were touching and inspirational. So, good job faculty, staff, and other students and administrators for all the work you did to help make that happen. Give yourselves a hand. So I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Swain for the opportunity to present tonight on a brief overview of the board training that has taken place. The trustees and the president wanted the public to be aware of some of the training that they have gone through. We're not gonna go through the, what, 25 or six hours of the training, including all the personal meetings that we did, individual meetings, plus the retreat and the training last night. But we are gonna give you a taste of it so that you can see what the trustees have been doing and your president, Dr. Swain, together. Just by way of introduction, I'm Debbie D. Thomas, and I spent most of my career in the California Community College System at Riverside Community College District, and then ended and retired from Barstow Community College in California, halfway between Los Angeles and Las Vegas, if you've ever been on that road. And my co-consultant with ACCT is Ken Burke. And Ken is a, as we said, he is a he spent, where did it go, 13 years as a trustee at St. Petersburg College in Florida. And we are both consultants with ACCT, and as a part of its mission, ACC states that it fosters the principles and practices of exemplary governance for community colleges nationally. And do I have the PowerPoint up? Or do I need to do it? Sorry. Perfect, yeah, you can just start that.
There you go.
So I gotta okay, I'll do it over there. Can I just move it? No, because I move around. Thank you. So the North Idaho Board of Trustees deserves credit for reaching out to ACCT to enhance their training on proper board governance. The trustees acknowledge that there have been governance issues here at NIC, and it takes courage to face a problem and develop a proactive solution. Since the engagement of ACCT, Ken and I have been working with the board of trustees and the president to see where governance best practices can be applied at NIC. The board is in the process of addressing the governance issues identified. Like any journey worth taking, there are struggles along the way, but progress is being made. Let's review the schedule of activities to date. On March 2nd and 3rd, Ken and I were on campus here and met with 14 important stakeholders. The participants included all board of trustees members, college administration and leadership, and constituency representatives from faculty, staff, and students. The purpose of those meetings was to acquaint us with the concerns of these various stakeholders in order to develop an effective governance education program. It was commendable that during the sessions with the individual trustees, each committed to working towards a positive accreditation outcome and to attending continual series of board education work sessions. On April 15th, that marked the first of our formal board governance training sessions. Board members devoted an entire workday on that Saturday to learn and discuss how, as a board, they can better work together and embrace the concepts of best practices in board governance. Ken and I went through a thorough PowerPoint presentation with an emphasis on model board governance concepts. There was a robust discussion with the trustees and the president regarding board and CEO roles and where they, their responsibilities differ and where they are shared. Each participant was actively involved. And I encourage you, because there's gonna be a lot more information on the screen, to read the screen while I'm going through this, because I'm not gonna read the screens to you, okay? I'm just gonna talk through our sessions. One of the last things that took place on that training session was a survey to determine the priority of future board trainings. The results of that survey have helped Ken and I develop a future training schedule. These are just some of the things that we covered that day, the CEO's role, the board's role, and the partnership with the board and the president. We also covered NWCCU standards. We spent some time discussing the standards, especially standard two governance and the eligibility requirements for accreditation. And then we ended with this survey, and this was the training topics that the board and Ken and I came up with for future training. Last evening, during a three-hour timeframe, the entire board, along with President Swain, participated in our second major training session. To show how our schedule is flexible to meet the most current needs, the first hour and a half were devoted to a review of the prior night's board meeting and lessons learned to conduct the business of the board more effectively in the future. Each trustee was again very engaged in the session. The second half of the training, so first, that was the first part, okay, sorry. I have a hard time doing the slides and following the talking, but okay, here we go. So the second half of last night's training was focused on two topics, college governance versus college operations and communication. An overview of college governance, including the role of the board, the president, constituency groups, and college governance committees was discussed. The overview was followed by the group reading and discussing an article entitled, "What is micromanagement and why is it not a good idea?" The trustees and presidents then each responded to questions on a quiz and participated in an in-depth discussion of their responses. Again, everyone in the room deserves credit for following the ground rules established at the beginning of the meeting and listening to each other with open minds to learn from each other and acknowledge different perspectives and opinions in a civil and collegial manner. The discussion about communication, the second topic, began with a review of commonly accepted best practices in communication protocols, including trustee to trustee, board to president, president to board, and trustee to internal and external community. Due to the shortage of time, the group agreed to continue the discussion on communication and to include Laura Rumpler with her presentation on media relations in future training sessions. However, all acknowledge that as a, in any relationship, communication is paramount to achieving success. There is no doubt that there have been communication issues with the board and the president and with the board member to board member. Once again, the board deserves credit for acknowledging the problems and making a commitment to learn and make things better. As with our first session, this session ended with the trustees and president rating the board on a 10 essential performance indicators of a high-performing board. The trustees also rated themselves on these measures. The results will be used to inform future training and discussions. Last night's training last night's training session ended with a cooperative feeling in the room. It is the intent of Ken and me to build upon the goodwill that we, as we conduct future training sessions with the board. And you've seen some of the future topics that we intend to cover. In addition to these formal sessions, Ken and I have been working with Chair McKenzie and individual trustees and President Swain to further enhance their knowledge of good governance principles and practices and to answer requests that they have as they come up. Three of the trustees have less than one year of experience as a trustee, and they have demonstrated a serious academic interest in advancing their knowledge. The entire board deserves credit for the commitment to this education process. As members of the community, Ken and I would like to make a request of you. Please do your best to support the board on this journey. The results may not appear to be immediate, but be assured progress is being made. Ken and I are so impressed with the passion this community has for NIC. It is an absolutely beautiful college in a beautiful community. Your student achievement surpasses your peer colleges. The college is as strong financially. You have a committed faculty, staff, and administration, and you just heard from some of your outstanding students. We look forward to our continued work with the board and President Swain as they learn and enhance their governance processes. NIC is a gem in Coeur d'Alene, and Ken and I take seriously the need for this gem to continue to shine. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, we're moving into public comment. Thank you for that training. We have about two pages of twenty-three-ish people. We're going to start with Deborah Rose, and we're going to have two microphones. And we're just going to be respectful, and you're just going to be standing on deck. And then when the other person's time starts, I'll start you. So the next person would be Ron Hartman, if you could come to the open microphone. And, um. Please, let's demonstrate respect for one another and start our two minutes. Deborah Rose.
During Monday's board meeting, Mr. McKenzie made the following commitment, quote, "We're going to hold each other accountable when bad behavior happens. In the spirit of that commitment, I am requesting of the board a thorough investigation into Mr. McComber's billings to NIC. It is my concern substantiated by public records request that Mr. McComber and Mr. Wagner are intent on using their roles as public officials to harm, intimidate, and to deny civil rights to those they perceive to be their political opponents and in billing the taxpayers and NIC students for funding their troubling actions. Their handling of fictitious unsubstantiated allegations against said opponents risk triggering violence in today's political climate. This concerning action has put innocent people at risk of a false arrest. Their targets include someone whose record is one of selfless endeavors in service to others as a Christian missionary in developing countries, a Peace Corps volunteer, and who currently serves vulnerable populations through a nonprofit organization. Further, not only are their activities inappropriate, taxpayer funds and college resources should never be spent on services rendered to board members' personal, non-NIC related matters. I am providing Shannon to give each of you a list and description of the eight characteristics of good governance widely used. I hope you will take this information to heart. Innocent people are being harmed by your actions. This unwarranted harm should never have taken place. In conclusion, do each of you think it appropriate for public officials to use their roles and the resources of an institution to which they have fiduciary responsibility to disparage the reputations of honorable people as a means to achieve a desired political or personal end? A thorough investigation into Mr. McComber's charges is necessary."
Thank you for your public comment. Before Mr. Hartman starts, I meant to say, um, I was hoping everyone would have three questions on their mind tonight. And those three questions are this, and I'm going to say them, and, um. How does this topic, that whatever's at discussion right now, advance the mission of NIC? How did it help NIC move the needle on student success? That's what I really care about. Demonstrate support for the president. So those are the three that our training is talking about, very similar questions, and I just think everyone should be at the agenda topics tonight that just ask yourself, what you just heard, is that focused on one of those, or should, and, um, I think those are important. So, Mr. Hartman, please share with us what is important to you.
Test, testing?
Yes. And Nina Beasley, you're on, please come to the open microphone.
I have reviewed all eighteen of the first read of the twenty-four budget, and I do not find the NIC Foundation staff salary and benefit costs there. Page sixteen has one line stated as salary expenses. The two thousand twenty-two annual financial report on page forty-three shows NIC paid the NIC Foundation two hundred and seventy-one thousand eighty-four dollars for staff salaries and benefits. The NIC Foundation is an independent five oh one C three nonprofit charitable organization governed by a volunteer board of directors. Will you please let me know if the NIC twenty twenty-four budget will contain NIC Foundation staff salaries and benefit cost? If yes, how much and why? Please explain.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman, and I just heard from the president that you may be receiving some follow-ups. Appreciate you coming. And Nina Beasley, and then on deck is Rochelle Odison, if you'd come to the open microphone just and.
Chair McKenzie and members of the Board of Trustees, my name's Nina Beasley, resident of Rattram, and I want to thank the Board of Trustees for your hard work and service. I find it very concerning that there are individuals inside and outside of our community who constantly try to undermine the elected Board of Trustees. When you undermine the elected Board of Trustees, you undermine the taxpayers, the voters. For example, individuals tried to pass House Bill three twenty-one this last legislative session. If passed, this bill would have attempted to give the State Board of Education emergency powers over the college if it were to lose accreditation. There is an email from, to the Board of Trustees pushing to rezone the college into a university district. Is there a push to turn NIC into a four-year university? I graduated from a community college and from a four-year state college. There is a huge difference. Our community needs a community college with elected representatives. Another example of undermining the voters is last November when the North Idaho Republicans created a recommended candidate flyer that copied the Cootney County Republican Central Committee flyer that the KCRCC has been handing out for two years. This deceived many voters, and many were shocked when they realized what happened to them. This raises questions regarding two NIC members, Board of Trustee members who benefited from this deception, Zimmerman and Corkle, and considering Corkle was or is a member of the North Idaho Republicans. Last of all, two previous NIC Board of Trustees, um, members, trustee Howard and trustee Christie Wood resigned to fall below a quorum when Pete Brochet wasn't appointed so that the State Board of Education could appoint three trustees, one being Pete Brochet. Again, this undermined, undermines the voters and the process. Thank you for listening to my concerns and for your hard work and service.
Thank you for coming down. Rochelle Odison, thank you, and, uh, Karen Shepler, and let me know if I got that right this time, and please, stuck.
I've seen the statistics of declining enrollment over ten years or so. Maybe it has something to do with the atmosphere of intimidation and intolerance towards conservative thought here. I was assaulted at an NIC board meeting by an NIC teacher who didn't like my sign. Other NIC employees who don't like the trustee majority have allegedly pulled fire alarms and otherwise disrupted board meetings. I trust none of the fine tenure candidates, uh, that were, uh, that were voted on today would ever dream of anything like that. Let's increase the number of quality faculty. I just want to thank the trustees who've endured through all the tumult and hope the staff and atmosphere at NIC can be more civilized even when we disagree, and that as a community, we turn towards God. Thank you.
And Dave Riley is on deck.
Karen Shepler, I'd like to speak to those that are going to be on the Subcommittee for Policy. In looking through everything over the last six months, I discovered that there are the only qualification to be a trustee is that you live in your zone and you can fog them here. And you all qualify for that. But then you have a board or code of conduct, and we've seen that fail a lot. So I thought to myself as a employer, because you all work for me as a taxpayer, as an alumni, you are my trustees, mine, and theirs. What can I do to make it better? So I'd like to see policy and procedure set so that when there is a disciplinary action, people actually know what it is, because I saw it fail again Monday night. And I thought education, so I brought this evening a government book and a communication book that I am gifting to the board.
Thank you for coming down. And Dave Riley, go ahead. And Robert Shepler, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, President Swain. Today, the Idaho State Board of Education issued a resolution prohibiting diversity statements in hiring. Although NIC does not fall directly under the control of the Idaho State Board of Education the way that the University of Idaho or Lewis and Clark State University does, I think it would be a good idea to make sure that our policies are in line with this statement that was released today by the Idaho State Board of Education. After hearing about the resolution, I actually started to look into NIC's current policies and was shocked to find that NIC has racist policies on the books, namely in three point zero two point zero one, i.e. affirmative action. Uh, affirmative action is actually illegal in the state of Idaho, and it has been since twenty twenty. And I know that the NWCCU wants policy to be up to date and in line with state laws, matter of accreditation. And I really hope that this issue will be addressed in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everyone is, how does the topic presented advance the mission of NIC? How did it help NIC move the needle on student success? How did it demonstrate support for the president? And I would say pointing out outdated policies, which we'll evaluate, I don't know if they're outdated, that is your opinion, and giving us something to maintain accreditation standards is one example of moving the needle towards student success. So thank you. Lisa, please state your name and.
My name is Robert Shepler, and I'd be speaking to the subject of the budget. When I started classes here at NIC in nineteen ninety-five, I was thirty, I didn't have job skills, and the first class I took was with Pat Lippert, and it was logic and critical thinking. And I look at our, this is still the book I had from back then, so it's almost thirty years old. And I look at our budget and our expenses, and I have to ask as a taxpayer of the county, why we're paying Dr. South still? He's over twenty thousand dollars a month between benefits and pay. And, and that's an expedient, that's a ridiculous amount to be paying somebody who's doing absolutely nothing for the school at this point, and the taxpayers are very frustrated with it. I also have to question the fact that for now, four months and almost a fifth, we're paying an average of twenty-five thousand dollars a month for an attorney who produces a report that didn't follow the logic and critical thinking skills I learned here either. The lack of evidence in that report is a sham. The fact that multiple people who could testify to that report and its accuracy is a sham. And there's a little line in there that says, if my report's wrong, it's their fault because they didn't talk to me. The, the community, the community deserves the respect of the board as much as the board deserves the respect of the community. We provide dollars to the school. The money being wasted on those activities could be utilized for student improvement, student, um, faculty, uh, tenure pay, um, retention devices to keep our faculty from leaving. There's a lot of other places we could use that money, and it just takes the application of a little more logic. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Jamie Burby and Jeanette Laster, would you both come down, please? Jamie Burby, if you would state your agenda item, please, and if you need help, happy to help. State your name and agenda item and.
My name is Jamie Burby. My agenda item has to do with the budget and board governance. And I, I am so frustrated. We came to work in tears after your behavior on Monday night. We took phone calls from parents that were in tears that caused other people to get emotional because of your behavior and where we are going with accreditation. President Swain has asked us not to quit like we've seen so many people leave. And I will stand with him till the end because your mission has been apparent and your actions speak louder than words. All four of you, right there. The financials, the money, like I've said before, does not last forever. The waste should be, this is insane. This is not about religion. This is not about politics. This is about common sense and doing the right thing. And the four of you sitting right there are not doing the right thing. I want to thank President Swain. When he is on this campus, when he came back, the mood changed completely. And we have faith in his governance and, and his operations for this college. And many of us will follow him to the end. If that's what you want to do, great. And I'd like to say, thank Zimmerman and Corkle for their professionalism, their knowledge. They know more than the four of you sitting right there. And I truly do not understand what your game plan is. You've been asked several times, and you won't tell us, but your actions are telling us that you want to take this college down. And Todd, I don't want to be papooed ever again and told to go away because I have an opinion.
All right. Thank you. And on deck is Alan Whitey. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please state your name and your topics.
Um, my name is Jeanette Laster, and I, my topic is policy and budget. Thank you, Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, and Mr. McComber for letting me speak tonight. My name is Jeanette Laster, and I'm the Executive Director of HREI. I also have served on the Idaho Nonprofit Center statewide conference board and have a combined thirty-nine years in public municipality and nonprofit facility management. I'd like to publicly acknowledge the constituency leaders for demonstrating patience and decorum during these challenging and uncertain times. Your bravery is commendable. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to, um, talk about student rights and the freedom of speech and expression without retaliation. At the last meeting on Monday, I was joined in the hallway by one of NIC students. This student expressed the importance of being, um, heard and accountable as representing other students that couldn't attend that meeting. She clearly was frustrated by the statement that if NIC lost accreditation, that no one would care who is to blame. That type of statement is irresponsible coming from leadership whom our students are relying on. They're relying on you as a board to reassure and make things right for them. Continued lack of acknowledging these students and the faculty that support them and responding to their statements have directly led to more than a hundred staff and faculty to leave NIC in this fiscal year. It is more than disheartening to these students who want security and knowing that their consistency and learning will be upheld. I also found an article, um, I do a lot of board governance training myself, and I found this article, and I'd like to read this. It is in relationship to the board chair, but it applies to all board members in governance. Um, a good board chair understands there are, they are a facilitator to achieve the best outcomes rather than a commander. They listen more than they speak, and they create the conditions in which directors can have robust and productive group discussions. A good board chair stroves restraint and patience. They focus on the process, which allows others to participate and enables directors to perform to their maximum.
Thank you for coming down. Alan Whitey and. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Alan White, Rattram, Idaho. Uh, I wanted to come in and say thank you, Karen, for your talk to this, you know, uh, this evening about unification. Uh, I hope I got that right. Is it Karen? That Jamie that gave the talk about accreditation?
Oh, that was Debbie D. Thomas.
I'm sorry, Debbie. Anyway, it was a good talk, and to your point, Greg, yes, I think, uh, uh, unification is a great thing. And I, you know, this divisiveness and hatred of, you know, you four and you two and, you know, does nothing but harm. You know, they're working together. I think they're trying. I think Greg is really going out of his way uh, with Terry and Brad, you know, more so than a lot of other people. But a lot of people here don't give them credit for that. No, yep, yeah, there we go. See, you can, you can feel that, that pain, that hatred, that, you know, but I think you guys are doing a really good job. Continue, carry on, and, uh, work for the school. Any other comments? Anyone? Ah, here we go. Hate. There we go. Okay, you guys keep it up. You guys are going to do a good job. Keep at it.
Thank you, come, thank you for coming. Okay, I'm sorry, he can't read it. I can't read it. If you, Jareen Seymour, Terri Seymour, I, I recognize that name. You, you need to, okay, I'm glad you're here. You got to make that easier for me next time.
Sorry.
And Russ McCain, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Terri Seymour. I've lived here all of my life. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, board and Doc, and Dr. Swain for allowing me to speak. I've lived here all my life, sixty-five years, born and raised here. And I went to college here. And the community, I just, I just wanted to let you know And the community, I just, I just wanted to let you know the community supports you. I know that you're receiving a lot of hate. That's what I call it, hate. Because you are doing a job that's thankless. And you're trying with ACCT, Debbie, is that your name, Debbie? Um, I think you guys are making improvements. And if the public would give you a chance. If the public would give you a chance and quit spewing hatred, where is the love lives here? I want to thank you, all of you, because you were elected by the public, by the taxpayers. And you're doing a good job. And I pray that you just keep plugging away because I know that you love this college and are really trying. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Russ McCain and Brian Segwin, you're next.
Hi, you guys, Russ McLean. Just like the building across the street, and her name is Zimmerman. You should write it on the palm of your hands and always remember. Really, this is about the budget, so I figure I'd just stand here for three minutes and give Art a fatter paycheck. Right? But truth of the matter, you have a mailbox outside. The letters are un readable. You got paint running all down on them. There should be some money to fix that. You could take it out of his paycheck. Okay. But anyway, Zimmerman, it starts with a Z and ends with an M. Okay? Got a little bit left to go. I guess I'll take advice from Brent Reagan and do what's right for the college, and I'm putting my papers in to run against you tomorrow. So there, that's gonna help the accreditation. So you've got someone to run against, so it's time to grow a pair or at least try to use the ones you have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down to the college. Brian Segwin.
All right, my name is Brian Segwin. I'll be speaking to tenure awards and board development for presidential succession. Congratulations to my former colleagues who most have left, but are being recognized and rewarded tenure this evening. I hope the circumstance does not diminish the sense of accomplishment. Proud of you all. I want to especially thank Kathleen Miller Green. She has what I estimate to be a superhuman reservoir of enthusiasm, compassion, humor, leadership, patience, intellect. Her passion as an educator is only exceeded by her dedication and caring nature. Thank you for making me feel welcome at NIC and for sticking with the college. This recognition is long overdue. She's my other ma. And I had other statements prepared, but I think what I wanted to say was, you know, we heard from Trio tonight. That felt good, right? Yeah, that's why I came back to NIC. I had people who did that for me when I was here. And that is the sort of support that our students need. That is not a unique story. Those stories, a lot of our students here have challenges in their lives who are overcoming things by myself when I was here. So when people in the community tell other people that we're indoctrinating people, we've had colleagues go to Costco and be accosted and called communist, Marxist socialist, we're gonna shut you down. Imagine how that makes us feel, like we're here to support those students and make them be successful. So in my time here, that's why I came. The reason I left is the instability that was created here by certain members of this board. So I would just say I do not have the agency to make those changes. You four up here do have the ability to affect change, so I would plead with you. Many of us in the community have invested years of service and thousands of tax dollars in this institution and wonder why you keep choosing ideological gratification over sworn duty. So just do better. Okay, get out of the way and let.
Thank you for coming down. Nancy Jones.
Nancy Jones regarding budget and board governance. I've heard a lot about the decreasing enrollment of NIC over the past ten years. I saw in the board packet the estimated one million dollars in one million dollar reduction in revenue anticipated in the coming year, just in the area of tuition and fees. I would like to give you some insight into that tonight. First, while the population of North Idaho is growing, the primary demographic moving in is over the age of sixty, and that doesn't help you with enrollment. The bigger issue you have is understanding why more young people aren't enrolled here, and I know a little something about that. It was just twelve years ago when, as a trio student, I walked across the stage of the Christensen Gymnasium and received the NIC Associate's Degree that changed my life. Now I am the parent of a seventeen year old dual enrolled student and a twenty three year old aspiring medical professional. I spend every weekend with my house full of young adults between the ages of sixteen and twenty four. Short of the dual enrolled students, none of those young people are enrolled at NIC. Many of them took a break during the pandemic, and not one has returned in the past two years, specifically because of the leadership decisions that have been made on the basis of political platforms and desires instead of the needs of students and the benefit of this college to the community. Many of those students aren't enrolled in college right now because NIC is all they can afford, but you aren't a good investment right now. Board members, I would love nothing more than to throw a bunch of money at you this fall in the form of tuition for my two students. But if you want tuition revenue to increase, it is critical that you stop analyzing past pandemic policies, past staff hirings, and even past enrollment numbers and focus on the future. This college can still have a bright future and continue on as the gem of this community that has been for almost a hundred years, but we need your support.
Thank you for coming down. Nylee Livingston and Mike Ridley, you're on deck. Nylee, I'm sorry, was that Nylee or you're not coming down yet? Mike Ridley?
And that was Nancy Jones.
That was a Nancy Jones. Okay, so we're looking for a Nylee Livingston, a Mike Ridley, a Greg Eugene Euring. Howard Coons, if you signed up for public comment, please, please get close. Welcome, please state your name. Any microphone there will do.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Nylee Livingston from Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I've got big investment over the years in North Idaho College. You asked for a specific agenda item. And so I read in the paper that you wanted some advice on on policy development for succession of a president. And so I wrote down just five things. I'll be really quick. Here's what I was thinking. Like when you're gonna write a book, if you're gonna write a book, you might write a preface. So here's number one in my preface. If I were going to be looking at the succession of finding another president. First of all, I would assure that the decision makers act with the, with the intention of representing the values and the interests of our community, including all the staff, the students, and other stakeholders. And secondly, I would assure that the decision makers hold their hold themselves to a high and ethical standard and have no other object, objective than serving the people and representing them, representing the best interests of the students and faculty and all of us here in North Idaho. Thirdly, I would recruit the very best overall candidates, and I'd give them complete honesty and respect as I dealt with them. And fourth, I would eliminate all or any political or other biases in recruiting and choosing another president if that was the task that you were meaning to do. And fifthly, I'd be
If you could keep her microphone on, please.
Oh, it went off. Um, I'd be completely fair and respectful and honest with, with all that we dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down. Hopefully, the board can get the transcripts of that last public comment emailed to us. President, maybe, is that? I appreciate that. Okay, Mike Ridley, if you please come to the microphone.
Does it matter which one?
As long as it's on. Please state your name and topic.
My name's Mike Gridley. I'm a taxpayer resident of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And I was city attorney for twenty years, so I have some experience with public leadership, good leadership. That's created this community the way it looks now. We have a strong community. It has a strong heart. I strongly support President Swain. Like one of the other speakers, I don't understand in looking at the budget why we are still paying Dr. South. That makes no sense at all. Judge Meyer has told you, you can only have one president. And Dr. Swain is that president, so I strongly support him. He's a straight shooter, doesn't have an agenda. He's a good guy. So the second thing I want to say is I do support the budget increase. I think we have to compensate our staff and faculty to support our students. So anything that goes to do that, I think, third thing is, I think you can find a lawyer who will not charge three hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. You do not.
Please, you're taking his time. Please be quiet.
Thank you. There are plenty of qualified public entity lawyers in this state. So I think if we get a board that's willing to work together, you can find lots of people that would be willing to step up, who know the law, who aren't going to create and make it up to support an agenda, and they will keep you on the straight and narrow. So thank you for your time. And again, I support strongly Dr. Swain and what he is doing with this college.
Greg. Greg Wago, I don't know. If, just, just come line up. If you're ready to do public speak, come line up, state your name. It's discretion of the chair, as long as you're orderly, orderly. That's all I care.
Hi, this is the second time I spoke. My name is Greg Green. I'm the CEO of a number of companies. And my last company is here in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. My message, well, a bit about me a little bit is just that I've been on boards like Gonzaga. I've sat on boards that are public and non-public. I've had companies ten or twelve that have had over a thousand employees and over a billion dollars in revenue. So I have some qualifications, but I should also say I dropped out of North Idaho College, so I want to thank North Idaho College for being there for me to get me educated enough to start. My concern here tonight is, is my message tonight is essentially not for the people here, but it's about the, this, my message is to the accreditation committee and why they're here. There is a reason they're here. And we all know that. And my concern is, I want to send a very strong message that the business community is behind this college, will support this college. And if you can be patient with us, accreditation committee, there are two sides to the reason you're here. The one is instructional, which in my opinion is amazing, it's fantastic. Dr. Swain, you've done an amazing job. Your faculty, your staff, your culture, and what you've built here is bar none respected by everyone here. Just thank you for that. I appreciate that. The second component after education is in the trustees. That is not going so well. And while I appreciate the sort of kumbaya culture that just came about a little bit ago. And I've had some companies that have had to do that, you know, where you pay a consultant to come in for ten grand or whatever. I don't know the number, I was kidding. Um, it's very new, so the business community is behind this for the people that are here from out of state, the committee. And twenty twenty four, we will make sure that we correct the errors that we've made in the past. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Howard Coons, please.
Does this go any higher? It does. Okay. All right. My name is Howard Coons. I live in Coeur d'Alene. My topic is board governance. Chair McKenzie, Trustee Bandusi, and Trustee Wagner. The many people who come to these meetings don't like you, especially the ones associated with Save NIC. This is something that they posted a few hours ago. Tune in tonight to see what everyone in town is talking about tomorrow. Board meetings have more drama and comedy than anything else you'll find on TV. This is the attitude of the people involved with Save NIC. They think dysfunctional board meetings are funny. They don't care that board function is the central concern of accreditation. They are not nice people. They purposely disrupt meetings as can clearly be seen from videos of meetings starting after the November election. You three that I just addressed are met regularly with ridicule, chaos, and personal attacks. I commend you for a determination to further the interests of this college, and thank you for your service. But when people mock you, they are actually mocking the tens of thousands of people who elected you, and you must not allow that to continue. I'm going to read from NIC Procedure three point oh three point oh five. This pertains to disruptive, hostile, or violent behavior on NIC sites. Specific examples of prohibited conduct include outbursts, intimidation, repeated interruptions, harassment, or any other behavior that disrupts instructional or other college activities. Step two, visitors to NIC-controlled sites or activities who violate this policy may be banned from NIC sites and activities. I'm running out of time, so I just want to say, follow that procedure and ban them from attending board meetings. I believe this will go a long time, a long way towards satisfying the NWCCU concerns regarding board.
Thank you for coming down. Greta Giselle. Il is Giselle King next. Maybe the other microphones. Both on.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. President Swain, trustees of North Idaho College, and fellow residents of our community. I'm an Idaho native. I grew up in Coeur d'Alene. And in the early nineteen nineties, I was fortunate enough to cross the street, cross the stage here at NIC and receive an associate arts degree from the hands of a trustee during that time, and that was my father, Norm Gissel. And so I feel very fortunate to have graduated from here. My dad was a trustee, and so my personal and family investment in this institution runs deep. Um, um, sorry. I want to stand here firmly and express my unwavering support for Dr. Swain, North Idaho and North Idaho's colleges accreditation. This institution is a vital part of our community's economic vibrancy, offering affordable, high-quality education that prepares students for the workforce and beyond. Accreditation of this institution is an investment in the future dreams and goals of our students, including mine. These young men and women will be the leaders of our community, and we have the opportunity to help them achieve, achieve their potential. It is crucial that we keep accreditation to ensure that its programs and courses are recognized by employers and other educational institutions. With accreditation, our students are better suited to transfer to a four-year college or enter the workforce equipped with the skills and knowledge they need to succeed. In short, supporting and accrediting this college and keeping it accredited, we can help our students achieve their dreams and improve the economic vibrancy of the community. And at the same time, we can just work together as a community. I grew up here, guys, and I will tell you, this community is fabulous. It is full of people who care and love. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Giselle King.
Hello, everyone. I'm a freshman in high school. I'm fourteen. We'll be speaking about the accreditation. I'm a member of the Giselle family, and that is something I take a lot of pride in. I have been part of the community for the short span of fourteen years of my entire life. Um, and when I see North Idaho, I see a group of wonderful human beings who, um, who've always supported education. And right now, my future is in jeopardy as long as the accreditation of this college is at risk. I would like to graduate here as a freshman at CHS High School. It scares me that the people are standing in front blocking me from that. I don't want to grow up scared of not being successful. It's very concerning for all these events to be happening. And that they're attempting to change, and they're attempting to change the future of all the community members for the worse or for the better. North Idaho College has been a great place for kids like me to go for a long time, and as a result, has put a lot of good people's feet forward towards success, many people in this room. Um, this college is. This college has been a place I've always visited my entire life and every interaction with good memories. I want to continue those memories in my future, and I, we, need your help. I hope you make the right choice to help us. Our voices need to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. That completes public comment. Congratulations, everyone. Successful public comment. All right. For constituent reports, Damian Maxwell, if you would please address us.
Good evening, Board Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Nick Swain, and community. ASNC's been pretty busy. We're just about wrapping up everything for the year. So a few things that we've been working on were academic best practice. That was the interview that we're talking about, sitting down with the chairs of different departments and ask them questions like, what do I do if I would like alternative reading material? What do I do if I feel like professor singling me out? Those kinds of questions. So we had some really good dialogue. Leave Eli Ova will get to that. As you can imagine, she's extremely busy with everything going on in April. The other thing we had was the diversity banquet, which took place here in this room, actually. Beautiful event. We had two fantastic keynote speakers who came up and talked about diversity and the importance of inclusivity in the community. Day of service went on, I believe, yeah, just last Saturday. That was great. We had a huge turnout. So we had a few things. We donated some more time to UGM hospice. We planted a couple of trees, went down the beach and picked up broken glass and any trash that was down there, and a couple of other sites. And then outdoor seating, we ordered some hammocks that we're putting in on campus for the students' community to come hang out in. Yeah. The last big thing that we worked on was elections. And so if I could, I would like to introduce a few of our new members. So please welcome up, whoops, Michael Haberman. Incoming ASNC president. Thomas Hershey, incoming vice president. Nana Griffin, one of our new senators. So yeah, Michael Haberman will be taking my place here. Yeah, it's been an absolute honor to serve as the ASNC student president and to represent the thousands of students here on this campus. I originally came here to study physics, and what I got was just so much more. It's been an incredible journey working with all of these students, all the members of administration, staff, and faculty. It's been a beautiful ride. Yeah. Any questions?
Trustee Banducci.
Were you able? Were you able to fill all the positions on for ASNC?
So we're going to have, I believe, interviews to fill up a couple more positions, but a couple positions for senators are reserved so that students can be senators during their first year. So they're just going to come in and apply, and then those positions will be filled.
Cool. Or how it was going?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Trustee Zimmerman.
Not a question. I'd just like to thank you for all of what you've done. You've helped me understand the good work that you and your students do. And I just really appreciate you, and I wish you the best of luck in your future.
Yeah. So I am finishing up with my degree in physics pretty soon here. However, I'll be staying another year for a degree in chemistry as well. So I'll still be here on campus and if you guys miss me too much, I will be at these meetings.
Are you finished? If I, if I may say one thing, I personally didn't really like your confrontation. I think it was in February when you were asking truly about a board response. And afterwards, even Monday night, I think it was, we kind of had a heart-to-heart. And when I learned that you were truly trying to get to a board response instead of antagonize us politically, that helped a lot. But before even Monday, and before even February, it was much in the works. But without your confrontation in February, it probably wouldn't have come even yet, quite yet. So sometimes a little conflict goes a long way. So.
I'm, uh, I'm not scared of conflict, so.
Thanks. Thanks for being an ASNC president.
Of course. Yeah. A couple of the things I want to say is, when President Michael Haberman, our incoming president here, when he's up here speaking, I'd like all of you to keep in mind that he's not coming and speaking on behalf of himself, but he's speaking on behalf of thousands of students. So please listen to what he has to say. Same with everybody at this constituency table. They're not here because they were forced into this position. These are people who were passionate enough to step into these roles. So please acknowledge what they have to say. They are the heart of this campus. Other than that, thank you, Dr. Swain, for everything you've done for this college. It's been an honor working with you. And the rest of you, please stay out of news headlines.
Have a good day. Thank you. Faculty Assembly, Ben Decida.
So it was rough following students. Chair McKenzie, members of the board, guests, and colleagues. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. First, yeah, Damian, thank you so much for you stepping up, and thank you for recognizing the hard work that's been going on. I also want to take a moment to congratulate. Again, I'm going to follow up with our tenured faculty. Such an amazing honor, such great hard work that they put in and effort. It's not an easy process to get through. It's lengthy. It's not always easy in the moment, involves a lot of, a lot of back and forth and work with team members, and it's a great, great process. I want to mention that our process is instrumental in bringing and building up amazing faculty that we have on campus. And so I just want to recognize that that process is an immense lift for those faculty, and so it's an immense honor and and great job to them for earning that title and respect of tenure. The faculty assembly met on April 13th. We had year-end committee reports that came in from several of our faculty assembly committees. We also opened up nominations for next year's faculty assembly leadership team, along with faculty senators. Those nominations are open, and then in our next May meeting, in a couple of weeks, we'll vote on those positions. I also want to take a moment to commend all the faculty just for all the hard work that they've put in over the last couple of years. Really going, I would say, above me on and really maintaining an immense amount of professionalism throughout a tumultuous time. I'm honored and humbled to be a part of that group. I also want to mention the budget tonight. Thank you to the administration for the hard work that they've put into this. I notice, I'm aware that there's some cost of living adjustments in there. That's a big part of retaining and attracting quality individuals. We have had a lot of folks that have been exiting, and so I think that's a critical step to keeping folks around. I know that there's been a lot of positive conversations related to how that's coming forward. I'd encourage the board to consider, you know, inflation impacts us all. And so as you're, as you're considering those things, I think it's important to just remember, we are members of the community as well. Yeah. The last thing I have is, at the last meeting, Chair McKenzie, you mentioned that you'd be working on responses to the letters of show cause and the student letters and everything. If you could provide an update on where you're at with that, that is something that's come up even in our accreditation meetings today. And so if you have any information, I'd appreciate hearing that.
I was hoping it would be an agenda item tonight. It didn't make an agenda item tonight. You're going to hear it straight from the board chair in collaboration with Trustee Zimmerman, and I'm going to sign it tonight. And I hope it's something agreeable that my five other trustees will be. But it's at least agreeable to me and the people that I've shown it to. And I hope it'll be on the next agenda with all five of our signatures going to 5-0. And if any changes from other trustees, I hope they'll come with their paragraph changes that they want.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any, any questions? I'm open to. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Since my name wasn't introduced because I'm on the, no, it's okay, because the name's not on the agenda. We had some changes. So my name is Sarah Martin. I am currently the past chair, and I'm filling in tonight. So good evening to board members, Dr. Swain, and members of the community here in the room, as well as online. Staff assembly met earlier this month for our regularly scheduled meeting. We covered our usual order of business. We also heard recent changes to the current staff assembly executive team. Our amazing chair, Carrie Simone, got to give her credit and give her a shout out. Yeah, stand up, stand up. I don't care. Stand up. She didn't want to do that, but I was going to make her do it. Um, Carrie Simone informed staff of her departure from NIC. Words cannot describe the impact that you, Carrie, have had on leading staff through a rough year. We thank you tremendously. We also explored end-of-year activities for staff assembly, including upcoming officer elections and staff recognition awards. Both are currently underway. During this meeting, we also discussed and, or discussed the thought of drafting and producing a statement of hope. The statement was drafted and put out for a vote. The statement did pass, and I will share it now. The staff assembly at North Idaho College wishes to formally acknowledge recent efforts to unite and work together to mitigate the risks to NIC's accreditation. NIC staff assembly recognizes that setting aside disagreements is difficult and expresses appreciation for the reinstatement of President Swain. These recent actions give us hope that we can continue to move forward towards our common goal and preserve the college's ability to change lives. We are hopeful for NIC's future and ask that you, all of you, join us in affirming our commitment to NIC's mission to meet the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the Northern Idaho communities we serve. So that was the statement that was drafted and approved. I do want to bring to light that the statement was drafted and sent out to staff on April 19th, a few days prior to the notice of a special meeting that occurred this past Monday, April 24th. The meeting on Monday felt as if the air was knocked out of us, and that sense of hope was challenged. A special staff assembly meeting was scheduled for this morning to explore some of the concern staff were having after Monday's meeting. We reviewed the statement of hope and if it should even still be brought forward. Despite the recent board meeting and what occurred, the staff assembly at North Idaho College reaffirms our statement and continued support for President Swain, the faculty, the staff, all who continue to do amazing work and will continue to fight to keep our accreditation and serve our students and this community. The one thing, I wouldn't say it's the one thing, but one thing that is amazing about NIC and those who work here is that we support one another. We lift each other up and are a shoulder to lean on when needed. We've been leaning into, into each other more than ever lately, and our shoulders are getting heavy. The support, this support will allow us to hold on to that hope. No matter how hard it is to find that hope, despite what feels as if the walls are caving in, it gives us hope to hold on for just a little bit longer. A desperate hope that there will be an NIC tomorrow, and that is my report.
Thank you. And Trustee Banducci.
As we think about support, as we look at it in a positive sense, support is a two-way street. The same way that trustees would like support, I know that staff and faculty would like support. In the same way, some of the staff and faculty may be encouraging to not have so many letters criticizing the board. Others have felt the need to have those letters criticizing the board. No confidence. In the same vein, you want our support and you are thankful that we approved tenure, and we vote for that. It's what we do. We try to support. The same way Ben mentions about the raises. I sat down with Sarah last Thursday and went over the whole budget, spent a bit of time there reviewing the step and the base increases. And I was pleased to see that it was included for the part-time people, too. And we talked about where the salary salvage was and where we were moving money and how we were doing all this. And I guess my point to you is, is you want us to support you, we would appreciate your support. Sometimes you don't disagree, you don't agree with us. You've been very vocal about some of those disagreements. You've codified them on, on paper. So just reminding everybody, it's a two-way street. You want our support, we'd appreciate your support. You may not agree with us. We may not always agree with the things that you're saying back to us, but hopefully we can at least try to work together, again, for the benefit of the college. You know, if we want to be vindictive, we'd say, oh, no raises or no tenure or no whatever, but that's not how we're going to play, and that's not appropriate. That'd be very petty. So hear what I'm saying, please. We're not doing those sorts of things. Let's just all work together and support each other. That's all.
Trustee Banducci, I would love to respond to that. So, um, yeah, it is a two-way street. You're absolutely right. We're still waiting for that on our end.
Thank you for your sharing. You're, you're finished now.
Still waiting for that.
We're moving to the next one, and that is Neil Doyle.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, President Swain, trustees and guests. Mine's a little bit longer than normal today, so I'll try to go fast. The NIC Senate last met on Thursday, April 20th. We did have one policy submitted for a first read, but the bulk of the meeting was reviewing the annual committee reports. We had reports from the IT Policy and Planning Committee. We had report from the Sterling Silver Committee, as well as Admissions and Academic Standards Committee and the Sustainability Committee. The Sustainability Committee requested I read the following to the board. Sustainability Committee 2022-2023 Report. During the 2022-2023 academic year, the Sustainability Committee voted to draft a North Idaho College Sustainability Action Plan that outlines sustainability priorities in alignment with the NIC mission, values, and vision. The committee defined five priority areas: student success, sustainability, curriculum, and high-impact practices; student success in enrollment, retention, and completion; strengthened communities, student community and engagement, natural resource stewardship, and energy and water efficiency. It was noted that the retention of the Gathering Garden on the NIC campus aids many priority areas. The Gathering Garden is currently used in numerous courses, including the culinary program, outdoor pursuits, and environmental science. And we believe development of sustainability curriculum would also benefit from an established campus community garden. Student representatives stated that the garden was a beautiful green space that influenced the decision to enroll in NIC and observed that many other institutions have similar gardens which add value to courses and the campus environment. The unique space allows students to meet and engage with a larger community at work parties and other events and passively educate by providing pollinator habitat, water-efficient irrigation, and bio-waste demonstration areas with signage. However, due to ongoing accreditation issues, the Sustainability Committee has paused work on the SAP. The report from the The report from the academic, sorry, the Admissions and Academic Standards Committee, they are currently working on restructuring to a smaller committee format to be able to engage students more effectively and create a more comfortable environment for students to share their stories. The last report was the Sterling Silver Committee. They have recognized nine employees since May 2022 with the Sterling Silver Award as well as a $100 gift card and a $50 restaurant gift card from Numerica. Numerica has been sponsoring the Sterling Silver Award since 2004, but due to some of their internal adjustments, they will be unable to continue providing those gift cards going forward. The committee is currently working with the foundation office to look for new sponsors going forward. And that concludes my Senate report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And so we're gonna, we're gonna move on, unless, yeah, let's go. President's report, if you please.
Thank you. There, there's a, there's a lot going on. This is, graduation is coming up, May 12th, so I wanted to bring that up. As we get closer to graduation, there, there are just a lot of things going on on campus. So I'm gonna go through a couple. Also, we start to get the accolades from all the successes of the students. I'm gonna go through a few of those. But I will just start by saying the commencement this year is on May 12th at 10:00 a.m. in the, in the gym. We look forward to seeing the, the graduates, but also members of the community there to participate. We've heard a lot tonight about enrollment numbers. And when I got here, enrollment was one of my top priorities or maybe the top priority. We've done a lot of work over the past year to get, to, to make some structural changes in enrollment. When we got the, the committee rolling again about two weeks ago, the report was we were down 19% year-over-year from, from last year. And, and so it, it moves slow, but in the past two weeks, we've gone from being down 19% to only being down 10%. So it's, it's making progress. When you, when you start to see your, your, when your growth, when your growth line is vertical, you know, things are, are, we're, we're going in the right direction. So lots of work to do, but we're also, last year, we started really our, our efforts to do enrollment or recruiting started in August, and this year we started in March. So we, we hope that we're able to start making some real differences and, and have a positive net gain for next year. Lots of events. We, we did a road show, which is, you know, everybody goes out on the road. We take a semi up there, so we're getting, hitting all the areas, career and technical education, the transfer credit programs. Did a, a big road show up in Sandpoint. 400 high school students participated. Tomorrow, we're doing a combined, or sorry, on Friday, combined Lake City High School and Coeur d'Alene High School. There's gonna be about 4,000 students there. So we, we hope to really start to regain some of our, we call market share in terms of dual credit as, as well as the full-time students that decide to come to NIC. So lots of full court, full court press on that. The accolades keep coming. We, we had two students in our auto body and, and patent technology. One of them is, is first in the state and gets to go on to a national conference. So, so great progress there. Our basketball team was named North Idaho Male Team of the Year at the North Idaho Sports Banquet on, on April 8th. So really good accolades there from our, from our basketball team. The production for North Idaho's theater production this, this spring, I Hate Hamlet. I can remember that from high school. That was a theme when I was taking Shakespeare. I hate Hamlet. Different play. But they, they did that this, this past week and they, two weekend coverage, and it's, it's now concluded. Great, great show. We hired a new soccer coach, Brad Williams, just announced on April 14th, so making progress there. Two big jazz conferences or jazz concerts this weekend. Well, one on, one on Sunday night with the Air Force Jazz Band, and then one was on Tuesday night, another big NIC jazz concert. On the 19th of April, NIC became the, the newest Purple Heart College by the Department of Idaho's Military Orders of Purple Heart. We were recognized, and now there's a Purple Heart parking place, and we have a, we're recognized as a Purple Heart campus to support the veterans, the Purple Heart veterans that come as students. They had a phenomenal, we had a phenomenal, you, you saw the, the need for, for disability services. I was, I was blown away. We had a disability services, I, I guess you call it a fair, but it was a, it was a showcase of, of different kind of disability service provided by the college in here last Wednesday. Phenomenal amount of technology and other support systems that support our students with disabilities. It was, it, it really was mind-blowing, the amount of, of, of things that we have available to students to help them be successful. I, I was very impressed. Our, the English department had a poet laureate, Laureate Ada Limon at the Art Spirit Gallery downtown last week. And our graphic design students, you, are, I don't know if you, Philippe, Philippe Valli, phenomenal instructor. Year after year, his students are graduating and going on to national media corporations. They're winning, I think, 14 aw, 15 awards over the past two weeks at the regional and national level. The students are just, just really knocking it out of the park, and it's very impressive, the work that they're doing. They all graduate with jobs. There, and there are folks in there. Two of our scholarship award winners from the, from back in the fall were participating in his class. One of them was, I'm gonna say 68, and the other one was, I think, 83. And so it is an opportunity for lifelong learning and students that, that, both of those ladies said, this is what I've always wanted to do, and I just never had a chance. And so they get in there and they are just, just really killing it with their work. The, the, we had our, another, another program we're working on is Grad Fest. We had that in here on the 24th and 25th. Lots of work by our, the staff that are helping students move on to their next phase. And so there were recruiters and the four-year universities that are trying to make it easier for students to go from NIC to the four years. They were here providing pathways to students to get into those programs. Really, two-day fare, took, took a lot of work by the staff when everything else is going on. So really impressive program there. Our, our financial aid, one of the things when we got on Show Cause and, you know, I, last month, I, we shared with Earlene Pickett's story about the Radiological Technology Program, and they got a surprise visit. Well, this past week, we got a surprise visit from our financial aid friends, federal financial aid. And, and I tell you, they looked for any, they were looking to find something on us. I'll say that. Because, and, and you give them, give them credit when, when, when you're in Show Cause, often it's for financial reasons or mismanagement. They looked hard to find something, and they thought they had found one student that we had, we had processed something incorrectly on. And when they checked into it, they found it, it was actually their fault. So our, they, they gave, they gave us incredible accolades, and that's our, from our, our business of finance office with Sarah Garcia to our admin enrollment office, every, there's a whole bunch of folks that participate in that program. And, and to have the feds come in and spend a week looking at everything and not finding anything wrong is a, is an incredible accolade for those, for those folks. And, and they were, the, the feds were so impressed, they called the accreditation folks that are here today and told them, we looked for anything and couldn't find anything wrong. And, and there's, there's been some talk on policy review, and what's on the, what's on the agenda tonight is, is actually this. This is a list of all of our policies. And, and so we are starting now to go through these policies and have everybody that owns the policy review and start the update process. It, it is, it is a shared governance model here, so this is, these are typically not things that happen very quickly. But we are starting the process to go through all these policies and start to kickstart that so that we get them updated. Some of them are incredibly old, and, and sometimes that's okay. Sometimes a 30-year policy is in, in place because it works and it doesn't need to be changed. But we should actually take the time to go back and look and make sure. So we're gonna start that process, and we'll, that'll continue through the summer. The strategic planning process, one of the issues we've, we've had, I think, one, one of the challenges with the board governance is our strategic plan had so many holes in it. It, it really didn't help us focus. And so we, we're really gonna work this summer to build a strategic plan that we can start to assign goals and responsibilities and start to make positive change. And so the, the board understands what we're trying to do, how we're assigning resources, why we're assigning resources to get those things done. And I think that's a real positive step towards improving board governance. And so we, we look forward to getting that en route as well. There's a lot of other things, but I'll, I'll continue to update in, in the, in the coming months as well. So that'll turn it over. Any questions, sir?
Trustee Banducci?
Oh, following along on the theme on veterans, did you want to mention about the stand-down that's coming up?
Yeah, there's a, there is a stand-down. I don't have all the details, but there's a stand-down that's happening here. If you have details.
May 8th, I believe.
May 8th is what I.
Yeah, it's a veteran stand-down, and, and what it is, is, do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. And if you know of anybody that can use this, basically, they take our gymnasium over here and, and there's booths up and down with aisles, and all the different services that are available for veterans. So if you have any veterans that have any need of any sort, it's, and it's almost anything you can imagine. I mean, it's, I think there's even people doing haircuts, if I remember right. I mean, you've got just about everything possible, so there's, if you have a veteran that has any need, and it's not just, you know, again.
It's not just for students. It's for everybody, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, but, and anyway, it's called a stand-down, but there's a lot of things that can be given away. So if you have anybody that served that has any need whatsoever, you can probably find something there that day from all the different organizations that are gonna be there, and it's very well-represented. I don't know, last time, I've been a number of years, I don't know if anybody has more information, but we had 20, 30, 40, 50 vendors there at least, I'm thinking. Laura, you got some more on that?
President Swain, Chair McKenzie, board members, I apologize for buddied in, but just for clarification, since you've shared it, wanted to get the correct date. It is May the 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here in the gym.
Thank you.
So just wanted to, to be able to encourage folks. I know the Coeur d'Alene Press did a, a nice article about it recently to be able to share that information, and there will be also information, too, if you just do a Google search, but I just wanted to correct that.
Well, thank you very much for correcting me. I, I'm trying to remember it off the top of my head. I hadn't, didn't have anything prepared to say about it, so. Great. Do you have any, one last thing. Do you happen to know how many folks are gonna be there, how many rep, organizations represent? You may not, and that's okay.
I think it's hosted here, but we don't run it, so.
Yeah, right. How do you know if they tell us or give us any insight, so? Yeah, anyway, it's a great event, and so, spread the word. Sorry.
All right. Appreciate everyone's cooperation in this meeting. I'm gonna be honest with you. I haven't reviewed the consent agenda minutes. I prioritized other things, and if we could just maybe, I don't know, if the other trees, trustees feel comfortable with them.
Chair McKenzie, thank you for recognizing me. Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain. We do have a little bit of a challenge with these minutes. The, the Head Start Grant requires approved minutes from the board meeting during which you approved their grant in order to meet the requirements. If we don't have those approved minutes, they will not receive their grant.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have looked at the minutes. I did not, nothing jumped out at me as a problem. They looked okay. If any other trustee saw anything different, but I'll, I will, it's a consent agenda, so we're not actually making a motion, so. Does anybody have an objection to us approving those? We don't have to make a motion or anything. I, it looked okay to me.
All right, I, okay. I hold my objection then, so there is none, so.
I'm that in?
Yes, these minutes are approved, and moving to the next agenda. Unfinished business, there's none, and new business. The first reading of the general fund budget fiscal year 2024, VP of Finance, Sarah Garcia.
And Sarah, thank you for that reminder.
Bear with me just a moment while I get myself organized. Sorry.
You need me to push a button?
Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, General Public, all my colleagues, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present our proposed budget to you for fiscal year 2024. I, I would like to start my comments off by offering a sincere, sincere thank you to the trustees who were able to find time to meet with me prior to this evening to go through the budget in detail and be able to explain our thought process and, and, and answer questions for them. I, I will remark that for those of you who were not able to find the time to do that, I would be happy to have a similar meeting with you between this reading and the second reading, if you would like, if you have the availability.
Trustee Banducci?
Sarah, one example of my support is taking out of my day from my office to review the budget so I can hopefully look forward to approving your raises. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you, trustee Banducci. Please keep going.
Okay. And I will also make one, one small note. Typically, I, I present the packet as it is in your board book. I have taken the liberty of trying to simplify my presentation this evening so that it, it's a little more understandable. So please bear with me if you get a little lost. I will, I will keep you on track. So the, the FY '24 operating budget, while I'll start, I'll start with the revenue projection for the general fund. So this is, this is the main operating fund of the college. We are projecting a just barely half a percent decrease in overall revenue for this fiscal year. The big piece of that is the decrease in tuition and fees. That is approximately a million-dollar increase. It's based on truing up last year's budgeted tuition numbers to what we actually experienced for tuition revenue for this fiscal year as well as a forecasted 5% decline for next fiscal year. In the state general funds, there was a very, very modest change in the state general funds, and that was for the change in employee compensation approved by the legislature. That was about $400,000. CTE, the, the division of CTE is, interestingly enough, they're funded as an entire unit for all of the schools in the state. So they get one number, and then they have to turn around and spread that number out amongst all the colleges. They also are in a CFO transition at this time. So the number that I have plugged in for CTE at this moment is an estimate, and I anticipate having a final number before the next board meeting. Yes, sir.
So just a reminder, everybody, when they're doing that, are they dispersing to both the four-year and the two-year institutions?
Yes, sir.
So I thought.
Um, in our property tax revenue line, we have not included any increase in the property tax base other than new property on the rolls. I have forecasted that based on our current levy rate as well as in anticipation of the amount of new property coming on the rolls from the dissolution of the Lake District in Coeur d'Alene, the urban renewal district in Coeur d'Alene. I'm forecasting an increase in interest income. That is related to the fact that we are, the board-designated reserve has been, we, we, we're done with our projects for now, and, and the reserve is, is continuing to be contributed to as well as the increase in interest rates. And, and lastly, the, the bottom section of, of the revenue, not, not a whole lot has changed. We, we still have those same kind of miscellaneous revenue categories. The one I will note is our county tuition. That is the amount that is paid for by our students who do not live in Cootney County but live in the state of Idaho. It's not paid this, by the students. It's paid by the counties. And the, the decline in that number is directly related to the decline in enrollment. I will pause it there briefly.
One quick question on that. And Sarah, that's a function of the liquor tax, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we still have any inclination to go back and work with that process? That formula is from like the 70s, if I remember correctly, and we've talked about at some point, maybe advocating for an update to that calculation or that process.
I am not currently aware of any effort. I am not currently aware of any efforts.
Okay, I was just curious if you'd heard anything, if anybody ever wanting to address that again. It's kind of died down over the last couple, three years, so.
Um, and I'll address something similar when we get to the tuition page where, where we have a, a situation with our, our tuition situation as well. Um, that's similar.
All right, thank you.
This is where I got a little crazy on you, so, um, bear with me. Um, so, um, what I'm doing, what I'm trying to sh- show is the evolution of our expense base. Uh, we started last year's approved budget base was, um, the fifty-one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, what we have done internally is we have made a commitment to hold open twenty-one bolt, full-time benefited positions on this campus for the next fiscal year. That is nine faculty and twelve staff positions. This is based on the anticipated decline in enrollment, as well as the difficulties we've had hiring and retaining people. Um, in addition to that, there's, there's an associated benefit cost to that. And we also had some other expense reductions that were related to turnover in staff, where you have people who are at the top of the salary range who retire or leave the college, and when you refill it, you're going to refill someone at, at the midpoint of, of their salary increase, so. So by doing that, we're deducting or, or reducing our expense base. Uh, the next, the next piece of the expenses are what I'm calling our one-time or temporary increases in expenses. Um, we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars in this current fiscal year for, um, for insurance. It came in at a million. So I need another, to add another five hundred thousand dollars to the budget for that insurance. It is our hope that as we move forward, um, and get some, some, um, forward movement, momentum on, on the colleges side, that we can renegotiate our insurance rates and get a reduction in, in some of those costs. Our current policies are, it's almost fifty fifty between, um, property and casualty and liability, and we're working diligently right now to work on our property and casualty premium. Um, with our cybersecurity, um, incident that we had this year, uh, Ken Mardinsky and the IT team has done an amazing job at implementing new, um, structures, for lack of a better word, and systems to prevent something like that from happening again. Um, creating a lot more authentication and, and double, kind of, I would call it double checking of the system. Um, there's a hefty price tag to that. It's four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. One of the reasons I put that in a one-time category is we are planning to ask the state legislature for funding for that for next fiscal year. Yes, sir.
So, we, when we did the initial review, I had thirteen pages, and this is eighteen pages. What page of the eighteen are we on right now?
You, we are.
I'm trying, I'm just trying to follow, because there's a couple of things that are changing. I want to ask a couple of questions.
We are, we are on page three. I'm, I, I tried to simplify page three for you.
Thank you for that question, Banducci.
I apologize. I should have said that upfront. I apologize.
Please continue.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, again, an increase in our legal services budget, I'm, um, based on actuals where we are today and, and hopeful that we can continue to move forward. Um, I'm requesting a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in our legal services budget line item. The total for those temporary increases is, or one-time increases is, it's just over a million dollars. Um, another expense increase we have that's going to be an ongoing expense is some athletic staffing changes. Um, we have, at the board's request, done some analysis of, um, of the parity among, uh, among the coaching staff in athletics and, um, at the recommendation of the, our athletics director, we have included in this year's budget, um, a full-time golf coach. Um, there will also be a part-time assistant coach in that sport, as well as a full-time assistant coach for the soccer teams. Um, we are also adding a third stipended wrestling coach. So that, that combined with, with other changes, um, is, is in addition to the bottom line, so. Um, here's, here's where we try to connect the dots for you, Trustee Banducci. That five, fifty-one million oh one two nine ninety-one, you should be able to find that at the top of page three if I'm your packet.
I can. I noticed, though, we have another positive added to this, approximately a hundred and, just under a hundred and thirty thousand dollars under the category of transfers.
And that is this athletic number.
Okay. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, okay.
Okay, I apologize for throwing you, throwing, throwing boomerang in this one. Um, the next section is the section that we have discussed, the, the state recommended and funded, partially funded a four percent change in employee compensation for state employees this year. Um, the, the request that we are, or the suggestion, the proposal we are putting forth isn't, is, um, the equivalent of an eight percent increase to, um, salary, to compensation on this campus. Um, for full-time faculty and staff, that is a step plus a six percent to the base. So a step is approximately two percent. Um, and then the, the rest would go to the base. This is, um, meant to help cover inflation as well as retention. We are losing people at an amazing rate. I have lost multiple people in my office to better opportunities that pay more money. And they are leaving, not because they want to necessarily, but because they, they feel they need to look out for their families. And I think that if we can, um, increase our compensation for the employees who are here, that we will have a better chance at retaining them. Uh, Dr. Swain, did you?
I was gonna say, this, uh, this also corrects some of the issues that we have with, um, our security. Um, the eight percent bump puts them into the middle range of their, uh, regional competitive class for, for pay.
Uh, the same is true for our custodial staff.
For pretty much everyone, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just again, I want to come in. I appreciate the fact that I didn't need to ask, you guys had the part-timers and everybody else included, so it was equal across the board. So everybody felt equally valued and respected. I think that's important.
Um, and, and I will thank you, um, Trustee Banducci. I will add that the, the part-time faculty and staff line includes an increase in the, um, rate that we pay for our adjuncts. So we pay adjuncts on a credit hour basis. Um, the increase is from a thousand dollars per credit to one thousand one hundred dollars a credit. It's a little more than an eight percent, but, um, I like round numbers. So I will, um, pause. Continue, okay? Um, so here's where the magic happens. Um, so when, when we look at the proposed expense budget, including that, the recommendation for the compensation change, we, um, have a fifty-three million dollar, four hundred and forty thousand, fifty-three million, four hundred and forty thousand dollar expense budget. If you refer back to the first page of the packet, our, our budgeted revenue is fifty-one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand. So we're just under two million dollars short. Um, and that's after reducing our staffing numbers already by over a million and a half. So what I'm asking, um, from, from the board is that we do a fund balance transfer for the, that group of expenses that I called one-time expense increases. It is not good fiscal, good fiscal, um, sense to use fund balance for ongoing expenses. Uh, we need to make sure that when we use fund balance, we're using it for one-time purposes. Um, and then because of the situation we've had over the course of this year, we have, we, we have excess budget. Um, we have not spent our full budget and we are asking to be able to roll over part of that to help cover this cost.
Sarah, is that the salary salvage?
Yes, sir. That's salary salvage.
Primarily, so.
Primarily, yes.
Sorry, the bulk of it, yeah.
It's the biggest number out of the, out of all of them. Okay? I will continue seeing no questions. Um, so our, so what, what I took the liberty to do is, is show you what this would look like. Um, if our proposal was accepted and approved by the board. So, um, this just shows the difference between the twenty-three budget and the twenty-four budget for all of our revenue categories. These numbers will match the other pages. I double-checked that. Um, and then from an operating expense, um, standpoint, we, with the holding back of the positions, um, netted with the eight percent, um, CEC, we still only have a two-point-six percent increase in our, in our salary budget for the next fiscal year. Um, so overall, it's a three-point-two-one percent increase in expenses. Uh, oftentimes we're asked, what is the balance between personnel and, um, non-personnel expenses? In, um, last fiscal year, we had seventy-point-three-five percent of our expenses were dedicated to personnel. Um, under this budget, it will be sixty-nine point one-four percent. Okay? So property taxes, um, property taxes were fun this year. Um, as I think many of us know, I'm trying to catch up here, sorry. Um, I've used this example to try to help clarify, um, for the board and for, um, interested part, other interested parties, how the property tax process, um, works. Really, the, the deal is, is that, um, the amount that someone pays to support NIC is a direct result of the value of their home as it relates to the value of the county. So, um, I will tell you that that sample taxable home value at the bottom of this chart is my home that I've lived in for twenty years. Um, if you look at the column that says FY twenty-two, you'll see that my home was valued at three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and I paid two hundred and seven dollars to NIC in taxes. Last year, my house went up eighty-six percent in value. The county went up seventy-one percent in value. NIC did not change their property tax base other than new property on the rolls, and I paid twenty dollars more.
For the year.
For the year. And it was all based on the increase in the value of my home. If you look at this chart as well, you can see in the third set of boxes down, that, where it says levy rate and levy rate change. Also, from FY twenty-one to FY, uh, sorry, twenty-two to twenty-three, you'll notice that our levy rate was cut essentially in half. It's because the value of the county doubled and we didn't change the amount of money that we were asking for. Yes, sir.
Sarah, is that also not impacted by the new construction, which also adds to the
It does.
Amount that it's being distributed amongst.
It does, but last year's new construction was, was not as, it wasn't substantially larger than the change in the valuation. So the, the, the relationship was not as large.
Okay.
If that, uh, that's not great terminology, but, um, so based on what I've seen on, on the internet and what I've watched happen in my neighborhood, I, um, I based our budget on a five percent decrease in the value of the county. And, um, so just for illustration purposes, I also decreased the value of my home by five percent. And, um, it, it just has a minimal impact of, is it four dollars? On, on my total annual tax bill for NIC. Yes, sir.
Excellent explanation.
Thank you.
Excellent. And this slide, you, you nailed it. Um, I thought of one more idea that we can add to this is all the, the years that the boards voted to increase the levy rates.
Mm-hmm.
Because people see the levy increasing over times and like, wait, I didn't vote then, but then I, I see the new rolls. So actually just like putting a clear block down.
I, I can absolutely, um, sorry, Chair McKenzie, I can absolutely put a line in there to, to denote what NIC did.
Whatever the reserving taxes is, the foregone taxes too, if they went to that too. Appreciate it.
That, that's actually, I think, on the next page, if I remember correctly. Sort of. Um, so I, uh, always like to provide a bit of a graphical representation of what's happened over time. Um, so the, the blue columns are the amount of, um, additional revenue that the college has requested as, as part of its levy process. Um, the, the biggest year was FY twenty-one, where we asked for a total increase of nine hundred thousand dollars. That was a year we took a two percent property tax increase and had a, a large new property on the roll value. Um, the, uh, green and red lines, for those of you who can see them, um, are both the, um, county valuation change and the home value change. So you can see there's a direct correlation between the value of the, of the counties and the value of, of the change in the home. Um, however, you look at that blue line that's towards the bottom, that's the amount of change in the amounts paid to NIC over that same time period. So essentially what we're saying is there's been very, very little change in the amounts that, that our taxpayers have supported proportionately, um, individually to NIC over the last five years.
Excellent, yeah.
Um, and then, and then finally, even though it's not on, um, we have not put this into our proposal, but should, should a, um, property tax increase be proposed um, by the college, um, this table, which is in, um, in the packet, would demonstrate how much additional, um, burden on the taxpayer we would incur if we were to take a property tax increase. Uh, the reason the five hundred thousand dollar row is highlighted is that that is the current average home value in Cootney County. So if you have a five hundred thousand dollar home, you have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar exemption. So you get a taxable value in FY twenty-four, you would pay a hundred and fif- a hundred and fifty-three dollars for the year, which is a nine point nine, the four cent increase, and that's about six point nine-three percent. So, um, that, that's the purpose of this chart is just to show you what impact that would have on the tax, on the property taxpayers if we were to do a tax increase.
Which we're not suggesting.
Which we're not suggesting. It, it's a reference sheet. It's, it's, I think it's valuable information should the discussion come up. Um, this chart is our, um, is a chart we've been using for a number of years. We, I call it the revenue and enrollment history chart. It basically shows the, um, three groups of, of revenue that we have. The state funding, which includes state and CTE, property taxes and tuition and fees. And, um, the, the line that goes through the middle is our enrollment. So, um, it, we do keep a fairly stable thirty, thirty, thirty. It varies up and down this year. It's a little lower because of, um, tuition revenue and the decline in enrollment, but, um, we're working hard to get those numbers back in, in, in a stronger alignment. Um, this is also, um, a chart. I, I tried to change it and I'm not sure it works, but we're, we're, I'm gonna go with it. Um, so staffing and enrollment, this has been, um, a conversation for the last few years. Um, what I did this time is I combined faculty FTE, which would basically, it takes the part-time faculty and turns them into a full-time equivalent faculty member, so that we're looking at faculty versus, faculty and staff as groups. Um, I will give you a copy of this slide. It's not in your packet. I did it at four o'clock this afternoon. Um, but what I'm.
This replaces, this replaces, uh, number nine, page nine.
Yes, it does.
Uh, we have an accreditation onsite. The whole team's been very busy. You're doing.
Yes, this, this replaces page nine in, in your packet and it will, you'll have the full copy in the next reading. Um, essentially what I'm trying to demonstrate to you is that, that we have a fairly equal balance between faculty and staff on a full-time equivalency basis. And, um, there's a, a little decline in the total this year because of, of the, the positions we're holding back. Yes, sir.
Sarah, did you find any, any value having it broke out between the, the part-time and the, and the full-time with the faculty? Sarah, did you find any any value having it broke out between the the part-time and the and the full-time with the faculty? Because I see we're combining them here. I I don't know pros, cons, because prettier colors, I don't know.
Um, I I, yes and no. I have done, um, like I said, I I spent a little time kind of um going back and forth with this. I um I can certainly look at looking at whether there's, I I will look at that between now and the second reading um and and look at there, if, see if there's value or another way to represent that dynamic for you.
I just, the only reason I ask is sometimes there's an interest into what is our our ratio between full-time and part-time slash adjunct. You know, and and uh in the kind of the community college model, if you will. And we we have a hundred and thirty-two full-time faculty and a hundred and sixty-six adjuncts. So it's a little bit more than half our adjuncts.
And and when you do the full-time equivalency of those adjuncts, it it gets a little more complex. I I would honest.
Okay, because I'm still on one thirty-nine and eighty-eight, so but maybe I'm not seeing the same numbers around.
The eighty-eight is the full-time equivalent. The number that Dr. Swain used was was headcount.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I I would really defer to the instructional division to to really kind of address that. This is, these are budget numbers. And um i- if you get to the fall and you have a faculty, you have a class that needs to be taught and and you you have a full-time faculty member who can absorb it, then the full-time faculty member absorbs it and then you don't need the adjunct. So it it's really just a a target, a budget, uh, an estimate.
What what was that headcount again?
It's a one thirty-two for full-time and one sixty-six. Now, this is two weeks old, so may change a bit. But one thirty-two full-time and one sixty-six part-time.
I know it's late, so I'm trying not to be too boring, so.
But so I think the goal of of this slide is to show the balance between staff and.
The goal of the slide is to show the balance of of between staff and faculty and and to show um the changes in in those numbers over time. Um, so this is an adaptation of a slide that Chairman Kenzie has um been a fan of um for a few years, and it just basically represents um the total full-time benefited general fund staff and faculty and what what areas they represent. Um, so this does include, um, they're not, the the positions we're holding for next fiscal year that we're gonna hold, committed to hold vacant are not included in this tally. Um, that transfer line is our children's center and athletics. So there are two new full-time positions included in that transfer line for athletics. Tuition and fees. Um, we are not proposing any change in the rate for tuition and fees this fiscal year. One, one reason, um, this is a follow-up, uh, trustee Banducci to your question. Uh, there has been a statutory max for tuition in the state of Idaho since the seventies.
We could skip this slide.
Okay, so I'm just.
We 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 actually did reduce uh fees for um.
Those are course fees, yes. So so um i- in your packet, and that's not something I'm gonna share with the public. If they want to look at them, they're, it's it's in the board packet, but we also have a proposal for course fees. And one of the things that I do want to note specifically in our course fees is that we have um in our health professions programs, we have been paying um a a clinical coordinator um through class fees. So if you, if you're in a clinical pla- i- if you're in a clinical placement and you're taking the course that 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 coincides, I'm, Erlene's gonna kill me, but um that coincides with the um because I'm gonna butcher how explaining it. Um, but the course that coincides with that clinical experience has a course fee attached to it that helps support a clinical coordinator who makes sure that both the students, the instructors and the clinical site are doing all the right things, following all the right rules and that we're we're doing the right thing by the placements. We were able this year with um some of the attrition and and specifically in C T E to take that position and absorb it into the general fund budget and take it off the backs of the students. And that's over a hundred and seventy-five dollars per clinical student that we um have managed to save. So we're very proud of that.
One quick question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
When we looked at this in the preliminary, we had a a reference to the accident insurance fee that we had started waiving, the eleven dollars. I see it here, but I don't see it on the final. Uh, uh, we had a change on that because we'd had.
No, we're still, we're still waiving it this year. We're um, we're at the end of the fund balance that we had sitting and we will have to evaluate um next year how to address that.
And we've been able to do that for half a dozen, five, six years, half a dozen years, years.
Yes, sir. Um, this slide is unchanged from last year. It just basi- i- it breaks down um the all the components of the amount that that the students pay. So, okay, you say, you sound like move faster, Sarah, please. Um, okay, plant fund budget, um minor change in the plant fund budget is is related to rent. We had a small increase in rent due to the fact that we um were able to secure an additional suite in our Sandpoint Pine Street Annex to educate our students up in Sandpoint. So there's a small increase in that um and a small decrease in the instructional equipment replacement fund. That is um a enrollment-based number. Um, this is your board-designated reserve. Um, this is, um, we contribute two point, almost two point five million, well, two point five million, almost two point six million to this reserve every year. This is the reserve that was used to build the Meyer Health Science Building. It's also the reserve that we have used to purchase property. Um, uh, the history and and an estimate for this fiscal year are all included in there. We do not have anything budgeted currently for expenditures out of that fund for F Y twenty-four. Um, and should it continue to stay that way, we would have a balance of approximately twelve million in that fund at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. Um, so this is my last slide, so yay. Um, uh, in in the packet, I gave you the slides for each of these columns and I decided in the interest of time to keep it shorter and just give the um the ten thousand foot level. The general fund, this this shows the entire budget of the entire college. All, everything that we're fiscally responsible for. It's seventy million.
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen. Um, so we skipped like sixteen, seventeen and and went straight to eighteen. Um, thank you, Dr. Swain. It, while the general fund is at a proposed fifty-three million, our total budgetary responsibility as an institution is seventy million dollars. Um, we have our fee-based activities, which include um athletics, student activities, recreation, our student government, those are areas that are funded through the collection of of fees um that the students pay to attend class. Um, our services units are our um children's center, our workforce training center, um and our dormitory housing commission. Uh, that those groups typically have close to, if not, uh, balanced budgets, revenue equal to expenditures. And then in our grants, the 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 lion's share of the grants are our area agency on aging grants and our Head Start grant. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any quick class questions? Getting late.
I I would just ask for approval on first read and then we can make changes and adapt if um if if needed between first and second read next month. Need a motion for that? Yes.
There would be a motion, but.
Mister Chairman, you, I'll make a motion to approve the budget on the first read.
You'll get another shot at it for a second read, but but just so that we can proceed for playing purposes.
I'll second it.
There there's a second and the motion is to pass the budget before us.
First read.
On on first, as in to approve the first reading or.
Just approve the first reading of the budget, right.
Approve, approve the budget on the first reading or we're like acknowledging this is the first read and and we're gonna go to a second. I don't think we necessarily.
We don't do that.
We, we haven't done that.
No, we've never done that.
Yeah, so so I mean, this is the, if 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 we just wanted to approve the budget on the first reading, we we could do that, which I think is how they interpreted the the motion.
No, no.
Just to improve this as as like this, the ground, that this, this is the basis and then we can make changes and we would approve the final budget at at our next read.
Well.
If there's no action item on this for the budget, for the agenda, the agenda says first reading. So the first reading's done, but there's no action.
Yeah, this, yeah, we don't do anything with this.
Chairman Kenzie, um trustees and and Dr. Swain, um I think what we're we're trying to get at is um acknowledgement of the proposal that we put forward so that we can continue to refine the proposal. Um, it will be very challenging if um if if there are major alterations to the proposal to be able to continue to produce um a report and and work through the details of the budget if if we don't know that we're on the right track.
Well, the problem is if the board takes action, then some people are gonna say there's an open meeting violation because the board took action when.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Um, and everyone, we've had a wonderful meeting. Take a deep breath. We're gonna get through this and it's gonna be great. So I think what you want to hear from us is this budget, everything that I heard as a chair and as a trustee was music to my ears. And I came in with a lot of concerns. So that was a it's a great start. So I don't see anything of slashing or or dashing. And um I would like to meet with you and I'm sorry that I have not done that before this. And but from what I see, um, I intend to uh vote support when it comes before me. But we are not voting, but we are expressing our individual supports uh for.
And consensus of a of support, right.
So, uh, trustee.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. And do you have similar sentiment?
Yes.
How about we just go down the road? Okay, I'm hearing similar sentiment without objection, so it is not passed, but we like what we see.
You're you're giving me perme- permission to proceed on the path that I have presented to you.
Permission to.
Not permission, I'm I'm gonna go with it. I'm just gonna say that. I'm gonna go with what I've I'm started and we're gonna keep going down that path. So I haven't heard objection otherwise, so that's what I'm doing.
You're waiting for me to say I'm gonna keep digesting on this, aren't you?
So, um.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for coming before us. So the first reading, action, Board of Trustees, meeting schedule twenty-three, twenty-four, Doctor Nick Swain. Does this include the June thing you and I talked about?
It's on the other one.
Oh, still this year. Um, no, no, because that would still be this fiscal year. So this is, this starts in August.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So so uh if you if you turn to tab three, um, all right, tab three, the uh, you'll see the the um proposed uh meeting schedule for uh twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, Shannon, Shannon spends a lot of time going through the calendar and making sure that there are no conflicts with any major events that we know of. So um I I I think this is a um, it's a good start. And of course, there there may be things that come up that cause us to change something in the future, but this is a um a good starting point for scheduling of trustee meetings for F Y twenty-three, twenty-four.
Um, is this action?
So this is, this has an action. If if uh you want to approve it on on um, you know, again, we can always change it in the future. But for for now, that way we have it and we can start scheduling things.
Is there a motion before the board uh to pass the agenda or to pass the schedule, sorry? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, trustee Corkle. Sorry. And is there a second? Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Trustee Wagner, thank you very much. So the motion before the board is to pass the, approve the meeting schedule for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And going straight to discussion and going to the vote unless someone stops me.
I have a quick question.
Trustee Banducci, thank you.
I noticed on both November and December, we're on the twentieth. In both instances, puts us five days in front of the holiday. I I do not have a calendar handy. I I'm curious as to what the holiday schedule is for both our school and the local high schools as we try to align with that. Thinking about people traveling for the holiday, going to see grandma and grandpa, that sort of thing. Uh, because the ones on Monday, so twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, it tells me we've got uh the, yeah, November twenty-fifth, uh, Thursday. People might be traveling right in front of that. That's why I'm trying to think how many days and same with the Christmas, be Saturday.
Would you, would you like to wait to the next board meeting to or pass it and maybe do some research in between?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the motion before the board is to um pass the dates in front of us for the meeting schedule fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Calling for the vote, uh trustee Corkle, will you please? All those in favor say aye.
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 Mo- or all those opposed, say nay. I hear none. The motion passes. Okay, tab four, up, discussion. First reading, so uh discussion, action, general legal counsel.
Doctor Swain. Right, so um we, we, N I C published two requests for quotation, which is similar to an R F P for legal services. Um, neither of those R F Qs received sufficient number of qualified applicants to move forward. So Sarah Garcia and I then, um, which is, it's actually not surprising because, you know, an R F Q goes out, it goes on an announcement. Unless unless a firm is looking for work from N I C, they they may not um find it. We sent it out through through several networks, but it's still yeah, um, not, um, doesn't, didn't attract enough attention. So Sarah Garcia and I then um reached out to uh networks of folks to contract uh to find attorneys. We found five different firms, um, and we proceeded to solicit proposals from uh from those five firms. Um, three firms quickly determined that they had some form of conflict that would prevent them from serving as general counsel for the college. Um, we did set up and had uh in-depth interviews with representatives from the two remaining firms and then use the criteria established in those R F Qs. Um, we selected uh one firm and um Holland and Hart, they're based out of Boise, specifically represented by attorney Bob Fauch- Fa- Fauchet, uh, who is a senior partner and and based in Boise. Um, so I recommend engaging with attorney Fauchet to uh serve as general counsel um immediately within one-month transfer period to um transfer over with uh attorney Mc- Mc- McAlmer.
Will the audience please be quiet? Security, will you please give her a warning? Will you please give the lady in the back a warning?
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay, okay. Thank you, security. We are talking general legal counsel and is there a motion uh before the board?
Can I recommend a motion would be to accept um Holland Hart and uh attorney Bob Fauchet, Fauchet as the uh general counsel.
I, I have a little different um motion in mind. Is there any other trustees that would wish to make that motion or hear mine?
No, but I will make one comment if I may, Board Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
I'm not prepared to approve anybody tonight without having more, without having more information or or seeing something on this. Uh, we have, there's nothing in our there's nothing in our board packet on it. I have no information. Uh, I would like to have the ability to uh see more information on it before I am prepared to make a decision on it. But let's hear if if you have a motion, sir.
I I do, I thought about this quite a bit. It's quite a unique situation that N I C finds itself in right now. And I think my my motion before us, uh, I wish I wrote it down before, uh, is that we accept Holland and Hart as incoming uh general legal counsel, but that we provide for a easy uh transition spearheaded uh by attorney. But that we provide for a easy uh transition spearheaded uh by attorney Mackamore when all communication. Um. As decided by attorney Mackamore uh going through to the transition. And um so as attorney Mackamore uh decides, we'll transition responsibilities. So um. Is that is that satisfactory to you as in if you if you decide to um tomorrow to transition all or if you 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 know.
Well, I I serve at the pleasure of the board, Mr. Chair, and so the board um. You know, the board, the board will get a better transition than they did last time.
Trustee Mack. Will somebody please give this lady a warning? It was both of you. Security. Security. I wanna go home tonight, security, and you're delaying me, please. And you're. Will you please give these two ladies a warning?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corkle.
I'll make a motion to engage Holland and Hart as our attorneys. Uh, and hope for a speedy and well organized transition of responsibilities.
Okay, well, I'm waiting for a second to my motion and I'm happy to restate it. Or I'll tell you what, if um. Security, did 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 we finish in the front row, security? Security, I did not observe it. Did anyone observe it? Did you observe it, sir? I would like to warn these two ladies. I don't see you doing it, security. Are you going to warn these ladies or?
As as I'm done. Maintain decorum.
Are you warning them, sir, or not?
I I, yeah, I can warn them. I can warn them.
No, I want security to, I mean, you you as are they warned is what I can, only thing I care about.
Stuart, you wanna? Please, please. Okay, okay, come on. We're we're almost done. We're almost done.
Okay, so trustee Corkle, if I may, uh, what is? So you're looking for a speedy immediate transition.
No, 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 not necessarily speedy, just an efficient and congenial transition of powers.
No, I don't think that really conflicted what he said.
I think I think we're both headed to this.
Okay.
It's amazing. We all want the same goal and how we get there.
Wrong words, okay? I mean, uh speedy and and efficient transition of responsibilities.
Okay. So I I think I think we're getting there with my motion, if if I may, um, and maybe even second my motion if if. If you may for the chair. Um, so I I'm gonna write this down that. You know, while we uh write this down, I'm gonna kill two birds with one stone. If you could pass one of these um to my fellow trustees to just read, I'm gonna say this at the end of the night and I would love uh. Be my fellow trustees to be familiar with it. So I'm gonna read a motion and maybe somebody can uh go so moved. I'm I'm gonna keep the name just while I read. So there is a motion that uh I'm gonna read. To accept Holland and Hart as new legal counsel for NIC. With all communication and guidance managed uh by attorney Mackamore with the board in. Oh, manage, yeah, with all communication and guidance guidance managed by attorney Mackamore during the transition. Uh, with the board in June's regular meeting welcoming uh Bob, Bob Foucher.
He just goes by Bob, yeah.
Well, Bob, welcoming Bob. Uh, if there's. Support for that motion that I read, if I'm uh, someone may go so moved.
I'll I'll second that or you want me to make the motion or?
You just say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Corkle. Is there a second before the board or a second um on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Going to discussion. So it's quite hard. To find a lawyer. When there's this much drama and trouble around. I don't. I'm just gonna be honest. It's hard to be honest.
He didn't mean it that way.
It's. What what I meant by that is.
Chair. Yeah, uh, I have not seen any information about this firm, although I understand there's, we have limited choices, right? And we do need to.
It's a, it's a, it's a firm based out of Boise. They have a a great record. They have four hundred and fifty lawyers that are that work for the company. Um, and uh, and they have um, they they cover all the bases of that we need covered HIPAA, FERPA, Title IX. Employment, all all those things that are um. Uh, necessary for the operation of the college.
So so what I hear you saying is one, they're a firm that uh is stable.
Yes.
And reliable. And then the other thing is they have the skills we need.
And and they have, yeah, fi- five hundred, four hundred and fifty lawyers to.
Do they only have one that has the skills we have or do they?
No, I don't think that's that. That was the problem is I don't think there is one lawyer that really has all those skills anymore. So by hiring a firm with a.
Right.
Person, yeah, so the within that firm, they have lawyers that have that cover all the bases.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I was gonna say before and. I think our relationship's improved enough to where it may give us all a chuckle. And and I think that's where it'll head. And I I hope it'll be interpreted in that fashion. It it's, we, a lot of talk about conflicts of interest when it comes to lawyers and stuff. And it's hard to hire a lawyer. By in individual at at the recommendation of an individual who's also suing you at the same time. But I'm gonna extend trust that. Doctor Swain is doing the best for the college.
Absolutely.
And um. So is Bob.
I I think he is a um, a a a top-notch lawyer, went to the, you know. Well, well-educated, well-prepared and represents the firm. He's a senior partner, so he represents the firm. And I think we'll have um no, no issues with his ability to support the college in whatever endeavors.
Can, can you tell me how many years' experience he has? I mean, you.
His hair is as gray as yours.
As I I don't have any.
Okay, I can accept that.
If I could, uh, Bob Foucher's worked with Holland and Hart uh as a bankruptcy and credit his rights attorney for thirty-one years. He does commercial litigation, commercial transaction. And uh his practices are listed as bankruptcy and restructuring, corporate finance and distressed assets, but um.
So he has, he has a lot of experience working with challenging situations.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna modify my motion. What is it? So I understand um our professional service con- uh contract policy um. There's quite controversial with immediate change of lawyers and I I hope uh that this relationship works out and um. As all relationships. They they grow slowly at times.
Right.
And um. So I'm gonna modify um my motion. If you gentlemen could maybe take take back your first and seconds to to hear my emotion and make this simple on us all. Uh, my, if if I may, I'll just read it and if you all agree, you can take it back and make them again. I motioned to accept Holland and Hart as the new legal counsel for NIC with all communication guidance managed by attorney Mackamore during the transition with the board in June's regular. Meeting welcoming Holland Hart um with his service lasting at the board's pleasure. So um I. I think that makes everyone happy.
I think that's reasonable.
So.
I think with all, with, I mean, as with Art, um, it it's not a contract, it's a hour, essentially an hourly service. So I I think there there there's no, no issue with that at all.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Change too. Thank you, sir. Trustee Wagner.
Uh, I haven't heard anything from trustee.
All all I need is a withdraw and then we'll make them again.
Okay, withdraw.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the motion that I'm hoping someone will say so moved to is motion accept Holland Hart as new legal counsel for NIC with all communication guidance managed by attorney Mackamore. During the transition with the board in June's regular meeting welcoming Holland Hart with his service lasting at the pleasures, board's pleasure. Say so moved, sir.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second. A second.
I'll second it.
Second. Trustee Zimmerman, thank you. And I got that right. Okay, any lasting discussion? Take a deep breath. Let's ask those questions while we got that time. How does this topic of legal counsel vote and advance the mission of NIC? Professional services, these are partners acting in good faith, we expect, and um. Providing orderly transitions. Thank you, attorney Macumber for um being willing to do that. And um with with the targeted date in June and um. Yeah. How did it help NIC move the needle on student success? So um, legal advice as attorney Macumber has found out is quite. You can be quite busy. I am sure Bob will have lots of work ahead of him. So um.
Hopefully not, actually.
Well, yeah, I guess that's true. Hopefully not. So um. Demonstrate support for the president. This is the recommendation of a president. And um. This is fault adhering to policies. We have uh. Two failed RFPs and we need this service. So. Without further discussion from fellow trustees, I'm gonna call for the vote. I'm gonna.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, briefly. Um, as. I I am not speaking for or against the motion, but trustee Banducci did note that he has not seen a contract or terms or hourly rate. Which has been very troubling to the community in my case. And so it appears that a partner in Boise with thirty-one years. May have some uh. Some interesting contract terms. And so I think in the next. Before June, uh, we should hopefully get that information. Um, because what what you're voting on tonight is to hire him without any knowledge of those terms.
Well, he's, he'll be hourly, just as you were, so he's.
Uh, trustee Banducci.
All right, my, yeah, I've been down here kind of chewing on this. Um, Art actually articulated some of my thoughts. I I have nothing in front of me. I am not comfortable blindly. Just approving this. Um, I need to see the information, contract rates. I I ha- I'm not satisfied and I I will, I will not support this tonight.
To be quiet, please. Trustee Banducci, thank, thank you for your honesty. And and your concern, I can relate to your concern.
It's not about trust or not, I just have to see it. You know, Reagan said trust but verify. So I need to see, I need to see some empirical data, some facts. I need to see something here. I have nothing.
This. Thank you. Um, I think this will, anyway, uh trustee. Okay, we're gonna call for the vote if with no further discussion. Um, okay, we're gonna start. We're gonna start left or right, if you may. Trustee Corkle?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
I'm gonna say nay because of the paperwork is missing.
Trustee Banducci.
I vote nay.
Chair votes, um, yes, aye, in support. So uh we will be welcoming our new attorney. Motion passes.
We got tab four.
Board Policy Subcommittee. This is discussion action. Who whose name is by this?
I think you could just.
Actually, it's my name. Um, I would like to talk about this. Uh, trustees, I I would like to see this board policy subcommittee be supercharged as in. I I want policies approved and passed and done right and done well, and I want them now. I wanted them three months ago. Um, so I'm even gonna propose we make two. And we split the work amongst the two of us. And so some people look at policies A, B, and C, and other people looked at other alphabet letters.
That's that, that's gonna be hard for staff to support. Um, one, with one committee, we can move fast and there's only one meeting that we have to support. If there are two committees, then there's two groups that we have to support. So I I just ask that you consider that as the the workload for the staff as we're supporting you.
Yeah. Two on that.
Chair.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Thank you. Uh. I think that to divide the subcommittee into two subcommittees might cause some overlap of work or not having some consistency. So. I think having one committee that's devoted to really getting in there and working on the policy, they can hammer them out one after the next. As a, as a two-person group and uh, and then that way there won't be any conflicts in different policies. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I do. I disagree.
That's fine.
So here's, here's the deal. We have to get these policies updated. We have a lot of work ahead of us and I do not want them to take three months. So my trustee Banducci.
Well, right now, in my understanding that trustee Zimmerman and trustee Wagner have volunteered to work on the policies, am I correct?
That's true.
So you'd have to have at least two more trustees theoretically volunteer to have a second subcommittee. And I don't know about trustee Corkle, um, maybe you're volunteering. I don't have the time, so.
There, there are only eight policies, eight board policies that have to be reviewed, so.
I I'm comfortable with trustees Wagner and Zimmerman doing it. I don't have time unless the other two of you want to create your own subcommittee also.
I would agree with trustee Manducci on that.
I'll buy someone lunch.
There there are only eight policies, eight board policies to to work through, so I think we can get through those pretty quick.
Like next board meeting?
Um, well, we probably get half of them done by next board meeting, the other half done by.
About by June, by the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
That's a good goal.
It would be nice to be able to go to the accreditation agencies and show up work.
Show them progress. We'll show them progress. We can do, you know, Terry, you think shoot for four of them, half of them by the May meeting, another half by June? That's reasonable. That's reasonable.
I think that's reasonable, yeah.
What do you think there?
But there's. It depends on how many meetings we can have. And there's been some discussion about how long that's gonna take. And a suggestion that only one meeting. And obviously we're concerned one meeting a month.
Well, we're hoping to stick to our regular schedule. They'll actually have an idea.
The, the subcommittee meeting to plan to.
Right, right.
My proposal is to have fewer meetings, but longer time in the meeting. So instead of two meetings that are two hours, one meeting that's four hours and just really do a deep dive.
Just power through it, right?
And we'll provide you staff support to, to work on them.
Right. And, and then the only other thing here is I had set a subcommittee chair when I wrote this because I wanted organized so that we don't stall out, right? But the chair is simply to coordinate what's going on, not to really control it. So it needs to be collaborative among the trustees and make sure everybody gets represented.
I agree. Collaboration would be great.
So I just want to set expectations of the community and everybody. This is not required to happen to like a board motion. Any two trustees can spontaneously get together like this and improve something, especially with coordination with a willing president and can sit down and hammer these things out. To get rid of any perceptions of coordination, to get rid of, to just do it the best way we can. That's why we're putting this to a boat, board vote to say, yes, we support this. We want this done. We're even, I guess you can consider it a sanction of the board that this is important of your time. And we're realizing that the dedication and input that's going into this committee. But I'm gonna expect output, like this is, I want new policies.
Right. And I'm, when, when we met last night, there was a suggestion of maybe three more policies. But I'm expecting that what the NWCCU wants in terms of looking at what we've got right now comes first. And we need to get this done. We've been told to get it done for quite a bit of time and we need to get this wrapped up now.
So revise the current policies and then address additional policies.
I, I would suggest that, right? If, if you're comfortable with that.
And I, I would argue or propose, just because this is, this is my only time to provide input because this is a subcommittee and then we, if we get three of them there, then I ain't invited. So I get to provide input now.
Mr. Chair, briefly, I have not heard a motion or a second, but I have heard a lot of discussion. Maybe we could follow the motion second discussion format and that would be helpful.
I would like to make a motion.
Trustee Waggoner? Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we take the board policy subcommittee and implement that with individuals involved and change the wording to say at least once a month. And change the wording to say, set the, under subcommittee chair, set the priorities for work with collaboration from all members of the committee to make sure everybody gets represented.
Trustee Waggoner? We might need a page to write that motion. How about we make a motion to say that we establish a subcommittee to review policies that consists of trustees Waggoner and Zimmerman? I think that's sufficient. And you guys sort out how you want to do this.
Yep.
We don't need too many details.
I think that's, let's keep it clean. We're gonna establish, we're gonna authorize as a board the establishment of a policy review subcommittee consisting of trustees Waggoner and Zimmerman.
We support from the.
There's my motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Go into discussion. Now, this. I think starting points at our policies is one thing. Looking at other colleges and their conduct policies and, and using other, what I consider, I'm sure our consultants know stellar colleges and other ones that might have trouble. And knowing the ones that have stellar colleges, that, that's working well. We might just be inspired by others' policies, if you could say. So just my input is, what do other people do is my first question. And that's, that's that. So I didn't write down your motion, but we're gonna vote on it. And I'm sure the board secretary is paying attention. Okay, so all those in favor of making a subcommittee and getting our policies updated at the most rapid pace possible? Say aye.
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 That is a unanimous vote of making this happen. Thank you.
I think that actually the last item probably falls under that. Because that's a, that's a policy that needs to be developed.
Yes, it does.
Which?
The.
The, the presidential success.
We leave that to the subcommittee?
That, move that to the second.
Okay, leave that to the sub.
Would, if we just have a, a general discussion about the June date? I think there was a discussion, if we could just recreate that.
Yeah, so the, the June date, trustee, trustee Corkle has knee surgery?
No, knee surgery on the 10th.
We don't need to get into people's personal lives. I think everyone, June 4th would be the best for a, a regular meeting. So, no, actually, no, no, no. June 7th, I think it is? That's a.
Mr. Chair?
Mondays.
Mr. Chair, for those of us that don't have our schedules with us and maybe haven't communicated with our families.
True.
Could we possibly have an email from Shannon with a couple of options? And we can handle it through that rather than trying to make the decision right now?
Okay, so the president's gonna work, coordinate us and just get everyone's expectations. It's shift into very early June.
Yep.
Uh, so five through nine is my personal preference, but open to ideas.
Let's do, do an email.
Yep.
We'll take care of that. Thank you.
Workforce Training Enrollment Report. And if I could, before people leave, I know people may, please come forward. If Ben Tishida and Debbie D. Thomas, if, if I could talk to both of you, I would really appreciate that. You're welcome to leave.
So don't, don't leave yet because she has an awesome presentation you're gonna want to see.
Dr. Swain asked me to speak. I hadn't been injured yet, so he didn't know it would take me so long to get up here being last on the agenda, but.
Can I tee up just, the, the workforce training center? When, when, when we start reporting enrollment data? Workforce Training Center never gets counted because they don't do things for credit. They're, uh, they're, they, they do certificates, they do all kinds of training. They don't do things for credit. So it doesn't fall under the normal accounting processes that the state and the federal government want data. But she, you'll see the numbers. She's training 6,000 people a year. And that, and it's, because it doesn't have to go through an accredited body. It, it's certificate-based and based on the training requirements of the industry. She can put together training very quickly and, and meet the needs of our community for those kinds of skills very quickly at a, at a very reasonable cost. So you're gonna see her whole report. But, but I, I just want everybody to understand that when we, when we, and we're gonna start doing this from now on. When we report our, our enrollment numbers, we've only been in reporting the stuff that really happens here and at Parker. And so the other, the other main campus that we have for a lot of students is at the Workforce Training Center in Post Falls. In the future, we'll have them both present those numbers together so that you get a much better understanding of the comprehensive nature and numbers of the folks involved. So take it away.
Thank you. Chair McKenzie, trustees, President Swain, faculty, staff, and members of the community. I know I'm between you and bedtime, so I'm gonna move through very quickly. But I have a lot of great information to share with you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the state of our workforce training center. I guess I didn't introduce myself. My name is Vicky Isaacson. I get the great privilege of leading our workforce training center. I want to share with you the great impact that it has on our community. And I'm excited to give you just a little glimpse into the work my amazing staff do to serve students and simply change lives. I'm going to start by sharing a few statistics from fiscal year 22, then a short overview of our different departments. And we'll wrap things up with our current state and some of the things that we're doing to expand now and into the next fiscal year to help meet the needs of our community by filling the workforce gaps. In fiscal year 22, we delivered over 400 classes, had 5,879 enrollments with a completion rate of 90% and worked with over 300 businesses. We do this with 26 full-time and six part-time staff and over 130 part-time instructors. We have five main departments performing this work. The first one is our Health Careers and Emergency Services Department. Numerous programs are offered such as Certified Nursing Assistant, Medical Assistant Apprenticeship, Lobotomy, Dental Assistant, EMT, and firefighting, to name a few. In fiscal year 22, we serve 1,207 students through these programs. We offer CNA and dental assistant programs as apprenticeships as well and are able to serve our rural communities by offering the dental program online. As you saw on the previous slide, we offer multiple types of apprenticeships. But the traditional ones most people are familiar with are the HVAC Plumbing and Electrical Apprenticeships. These programs are seeing explosive growth and experiencing record enrollment. In fiscal year 22, we had 637 students enroll in these programs. And one year later, we had a 12% increase to 713 students enrolling in those programs. This number does not include the continuing education units and testing. We expect another significant increase again in the fall with increasing Washington employers wanting to partner with us and a new electrical class for K-Tech, which I will talk about further in just a little bit. Our Workforce Development Department offers the CDL program, short introductory welding classes, and numerous business and professional classes, mostly online, in supervision, bookkeeping, data analytics, coding, and more. In fiscal year 22, 478 individuals enrolled in these programs. Our customized training department develops custom coursework and programs that are typically offered or need to be delivered at unique times, locations, or through alternative delivery methods. Training can be developed that is specific to one or multiple employers' needs and may be offered only once or on a continuous basis through open enrollment, depending on the ongoing need of our community. In fiscal year 22, this department had a total of 1,686 enrollments. This number includes Safety Fest, which is facilitated by our customized training manager. And this event is held in February and is a fantastic opportunity to bring people throughout our greater region into our facility and provide three days of free safety training such as OSHA, CPR, first aid, forklift, flagging, stop the bleed, and many more. With more than half of the trainings leading to an industry-recognized credential. This year's event even saw record numbers with over 600, 678 individuals taking 85 classes, resulting in 1,568 registrations. It's an amazing event. Many people don't know that we administer, administer the Miney, Mine Safety and Health Administration grant for the state of Idaho and train hundreds of miners and contractors each year in safety practices for surface and underground mines. In fiscal year 22, our program manager delivered 44 classes to 348 miners and contractors. This year, we're on track to serve record numbers as our program manager and trainer continues to not only travel throughout Idaho conducting training, but also travels to several surrounding states as well, being a good neighbor. Here are our overall key performance indicators for fiscal year 22. Our revenue was over 2.4 million, which was a 4% increase from the previous year. While that is great, it was a transition year for us actually as we had phased out community education or the personal interest classes to provide us the bandwidth to better serve the needs of our local employers. Our quality score, which is basically our evaluation, went to 99% from 96% the previous fiscal year. And our completion rate also increased from 83 to 90%, which I mentioned earlier. Enrollment numbers appear to have dipped in fiscal year 22 from the previous year. But that is due to that strategic decision to reduce those personal interest classes to focus on workforce-related programs. The overall numbers are lower, but enrollments in workforce classes did increase. And in fiscal year, as I mentioned at the start, we had 5,879 enrollments. So how are we currently doing? As of the end of the third quarter of, of this fiscal year, our revenue was just over 2.5 million, up 19% year over year. Each of our departments have realized an increase in enrollments. And although in those numbers, it appears that apprenticeship is showing a decrease, it does not include those continuing education unit and placement testing numbers that I mentioned previously. Overall, we have surpassed last year's enrollments by 23% and have two months left in this fiscal year. As of today, we are over 6,000 enrollments and our revenue is nearly 2.8 million. This is another record year for us. We've been extremely busy over the past year expanding current programs and adding new ones. We started up our own CDL program just over a year ago after dissolving a partnership with a local truck driving school. And we seem to always have a waitlist of about 40 students. We're working on expanding the program to serve the general population and have also expanded with a few public-private partnerships, including providing CDL training to the students attending the Volta Line School at our Parker Technical Center. We started offering dental assistant training online in the form of an apprenticeship, giving us the ability to serve rural communities throughout the state. We also partnered with K-Tech to offer their students the dental assisting program in addition to our plumbing apprenticeship program. We will offer electrical apprenticeship starting this fall to K-Tech students as well. Those students at K-Tech can seamlessly continue those programs post-high school graduation. We received a grant from our state Workby, Workforce Development Council to develop and deliver a construction apprenticeship that began last November. And we will also be offering a heavy equipment operator apprenticeship this fall. I'm also very excited to share that this June, we're offering a three-week construction pre-apprenticeship program for high school juniors and seniors that will introduce them to each of our construction apprenticeship pathways. And we've secured scholarships to cover student registration fees, thanks to the support of our NIC Foundation. The program will end in a job fair designed to connect students with local employers in the construction industry for summer employment and hopefully beyond. A few existing programs we expanded this year due to the demand are the EMT program and the Medical Assistant Apprenticeship. We're looking into potentially offering an EMT program for our rural districts in Bonner and Boundary County, as well as an advanced EMT program in the near future as well. Our students are not eligible for financial aid, but we have multiple ways to assist them with the registration costs for our programs. Many employers assist their employees with these costs. The organizations, Equus, and Department of Labor assist many students through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. We offer payment plans. We have very small Sally Mae loans available. High school students can use their advanced opportunity fund for some of our programs. And then there's Idaho Launch. You may have hear, heard about Idaho Launch recently in the legislation that's passed for next year's high school students to be eligible for up to $8,000 in training in high-demand careers. But right now, there are funds available to pay 90% of registration costs up to the amount of $5,000 for each Idahoan who is or will go to work for an Idaho employer. That funding has run out for this fiscal year, but starting July 1st, people can reapply for that or can apply for that. And there's $5 million available to the state for fiscal year 24 for Idaho Launch. Several of our programs provide pathways towards a degree if our students desire to further their education. One example of this is with our traditional apprenticeship programs, HVAC Plumbing and Electrical. In addition to those four-year apprenticeships, students only have to take an additional 15 credits of general education to be eligible for an associate's degree. We're working on aligning curriculum where we can and other areas that can present these types of opportunities to students and encourage them to continue on. We have a few combined marketing materials to show students these pathways and we'll continue to work on additional ones. I want to publicly thank my staff for their hard work and dedication that has, has us on this path of continued growth resulting in better service to our community. And thank you in advance for your continued support and the opportunity to share this with you.
Were any questions?
I'd just say, you know, as, as you can see, Vicky is just super excited about this. She has a great team and, you know, six, they're serving 6,000 students in our community. And, and I, I think a lot of people just never realize that. So hats off to. So um hats off to her and her work. Um, they do, they do phenomenal things for the, for the community.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to take us back um to general legal counsel. And I I just think that North Idaho College should utilize North Idaho services. And I'm grateful and appreciative that Holland and Hart is coming in. I I think we should just keep open um an RFP for for lawyer. If there's ever um a North Idaho law firm who is interested, to to say hi. So.
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
But it's a, you know, it isn't, it's sort of an, it's not even at will because it's hourly. Um, so if um.
And I want to, I want to say like, it's no, no reflection. I I I'm, we, we need, we need legal help, so.
Yep, okay. Good.
Thank you for doing that. And then uh policy development for presidential succession, I would just like to um so let, put out my initial thoughts at looking at this policy. This policy uh was included in the, in the board accreditation response at the end of March. And as I was reading the pre-draft, i- it definitely caught me by surprise. And a- as it's written right now, um I'm have many, many concerns with it written as now. So um.
It wa- it was, it was just meant as a, as a suggested draft to to demonstrate that we are working on it. It's not, it's, it's not meant, I mean, it was done by our staff and
Yeah.
um, pulled in by ACCT.
And I understand that's an example of uh actually, I want, Dr. Swain, y- you had some, a good idea that of uh just general policy libraries um and in soliciting what other people did. So um, well done with it. So anyway, uh, thank you for letting me express my opinion on that agenda topic. And we just finished with workforce training for remarks for the good of the order, and the chair is going to take some liberty uh tonight. So any other trustees, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say some things. So I've written a thank you note. So I'm gonna, as chair, I'm going to speak on behalf of the board. And um, I'm going to say thank you to the Cootney County Board of County Commissioners for the considerate and generous use of your facility Monday night. All meeting locations were unavailable on campus where they were focused on engaging students. Meeting off-campus was deemed the best meeting location, and we appreciate the opening of your facility. We ran later than the chair estimated and appreciate whomever closed the room. Please relay our appreciation to the supporting staff. So.
That's, that's great. I think that's very appropriate.
Good.
And there's more I want to say. I just want to say I'm proud of our golf teams. Uh, as I understand it, they were undefeated in their conference. So that's, please correct me if I'm wrong with that, but that's pretty good. And got the thank you done. And there's one more thing I want to say that's been. I'm going to read it because that's the edited draft. It says, Greg, read this one. All right. So this is coming from me tonight, and I just want to thank uh the participants uh who reviewed this, Dr. Swain and and uh trustee Zimmerman. Even though I keep having troubles with your name, it is not intentional, so I'm sorry about that. Uh, this is from me tonight as board chair. So North Idaho College as an organization. And trustees, if you, I handed out a piece of paper if you want. Um, this, that's an earlier draft of it. It's similar. North Idaho College as an organization that can is an organization that consists of staff, faculty, and students, and the multiple votes of no confidence through the years have been heard and considered. The extraordinary commitment, dedication, and time investments made in service to NIC by all is extraordinary. The institution of NIC cannot operate without the staff, faculty, and students and the accomplishments and contributions of the people who make NIC a stellar college must be recognized. The board appreciates ASNC's commitment to support every president who is committed to actively participate in this NIC community, listen to student voices, and strive for excellence. That's a direct quote written in ASNC's November 30th, 2021 resolution. Recently, within the past several months, ASNC has shared numerous ways in which students' lives have been improved through the fruitful efforts of their constituent group, and the board commends you on your efforts. Student success is the underpinning of NIC's success. The board understands board actions and motions have caused large amounts of concern, as also stated on ASNC Resolution Date 9, 2022, December. The college senate asks the question, what's the point, this is quoted, of having a diverse body of represent, representatives of the NIC community if the board decides to arbitrarily change policies without its consultation? Let it be known, the board appreciates having a diverse body of representatives of the NIC community in policy ideation. The marketplace of ideas requires different perspectives to be valued and heard. NIC is a safe space to engage in various ideas, perspectives, and resolutions that are needed to encourage hearts and minds in the pursuit of truth. Within the board's authority, the board accepts all input. Sometimes that input takes courage, as votes of no confidence can at times require. Disagreement is a strength of our country, and the ability for people to voice their opinions and be secure in their jobs demonstrates that openness and the willingness to listen exists at NIC. The current board is glad to now provide a response and wishes it had been timelier. The board appreciates the commitment from NIC staff to support the students, faculty, administration, and this great community. The board is confident each of you will continue contributing to the good work that has received accolades from the NWCCU. The board appreciates the devotion from NIC's faculty to the college and community in doing the faculty's part every day to maintain the college's accreditation, which your contributions have been reaffirmed in every major review cycle from 1950 to present date. And to our student leaders, you inspire us. The evolution of us listening to you and adapting at times in real time to your thoughts is genuine. Each constituent group plays a very important role at the college, and the board is committed to working to improve our board governance and respecting the board members' roles. The board desires to learn together and to build bridges and move beyond the votes of no confidence. Through this response, that is not meant to defend board actions, the board hopes to see NIC maintain an environment for students to excel and employees to thrive. The board recognizes all parties want NIC to succeed. The board desires to work with all constituent groups for the betterment of the students and our college. Trustees McKenzie, Banducci, Wagner, Zimmerman, and Corkle intend to learn to speak with one voice, focus on resolving conflict, and work together as a board to keep the interests of our students at the forefront of our efforts. The board looks forward to the continued success of North Idaho College. Give me
That's.
two seconds to just make sure I got everything. I don't want to miss anything and call another special meeting, folks. Nobody wants that. Is there anything else we have to do tonight, Don?
That's it.
Okay, that one's signed. I would, I would sign this if if I could get this printed out in a timely fashion so I can sign it. And if we could all include it, and this is what I wanted to do after I said it. It's, it's fine. That faculty and staff have worked, they've already printed for me. It's gone multiple revisions. It's my fault. Um.
Send it to me and I'll get it.
Absolutely. And, but I I do hope my fellow trustees, that reflects your sentiment as well. And maybe we could put this in the board agenda packet, get an agenda item at the next meeting. Maybe not read it again because people can read it in the board packet, and we get a five-o vote is my hope. So uh tonight is adjourned. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.